If I step out, I'm just expecting a call from pediatricians for a culture on one of my kids.
Yeah, if you step out, because you gotta step out.
Comes in, I gotta step out.
Xena, could you test your mic and just see that people can hear you?
Can you hear me?
I can hear Xena fine.
Hi, Xena, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
All right. Could people hear Xena when she just spoke? No, none of us can see with.
Michelle, can you hear me?
Morning, everyone.
Can Dr. Evans hear me?
I can hear everyone.
Okay, Dr. Evans, can you hear me?
I don't think anybody could hear Xena.
Xena, could you test your microphone again?
Dr. Evans?
Hold on.
She said yeah.
Okay.
Am I still muffled?
Can you hear me now? Hello?
Let's just go one around, if you don't mind, let's go around the room once. Xena, could you just test and every, can I get thumbs up from at least one person if you can hear Xena well?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Okay. And you can hear me? Karen?
Can you hear me?
All right, and I'm testing my mic.
That was sort of, oh. I think I muffled.
How about Jason? Jason, can you hear me? He's on mute.
A little, little muffled and quiet, but I can hear you, Brian.
It's.
Okay, you can.
Brian?
So you can hear, so you can hear me. Chris is gonna speak, tell me if you can hear Chris.
Jason, one, two, three.
That's Chris.
Okay.
Chris, just pull your mic as close as you can over to you and then.
Yeah.
It's better when your mics are very close to you, it's hard to hear you through your mask.
It's, it's like when you're singing at a microphone, you really have to practically eat the microphone to be. Okay, so, um. Let's wait till, Chris, are you stepping out for a moment? Do you want us to wait?
Just a quick moment.
Oh. WinCam, are, actually, can, Karen, can you make me a co-host?
Oh, yes, sorry.
WinCam, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. So, let's start broadcasting.
Webinar is now live.
Excellent. Let's give people a chance to get in. Good morning, everyone. We're gonna give everybody a second to log in and then call the meeting order.
Actually, Evan is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Karen, did you see Evan has got his hand up?
Yep.
Okay, and WinCam, are we live now?
One sec.
I see Jen.
We're gonna go live in a moment as soon as WinCam has us ready.
Yeah, you are live, so go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the school committee meeting of December 1st, 2020 to order. It's a regular session at 9:30 a.m. I'm gonna go over the agenda. We will start with a student report this morning. We will then move on to public comment. We've got things a little out of order, so I've actually put them in order on the agenda, so we don't have to make motions to change the, the order of our meeting. We're first gonna start with a report and discussion item, a health department update. We're then gonna move on to an action item, vote to accept the Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence grant. We'll then move back to some additional reports and discussion items, an update on COVID-19 district response, student mental health report, fiscal year '22 budget development process and timeline. Preliminary winter sports update. We then have an additional action item, which is a vote to accept minutes on the number of dates. The chair report, superintendent report, future agenda items, and future meeting dates. So with that, I would like to move directly into our student report. And I see we have Evan here. Good morning, Evan. I think you're, yep, you're already in here, so welcome. Feel free to unmute yourself. Yes, thank you.
Good morning, thank you guys all for having me. Just a quick student report here today. It is now December somehow, so I think all students are working on getting in there until a winter break is coming. We just had athletic registration for our winter sports season open up at the high school. And we wrapped up our virtual slash social distance group week last week. We have school pictures happening this week through next week, organized by cohort and by grade. And I just know that students, you know, coming back from Thanksgiving break, we've seen an increase in cases, so we had more students out of school either quarantining or staying home just being safe. I personally, yesterday, I did not travel over Thanksgiving break, but I.
They can hear.
Evan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, we, we could hear you.
I myself was, I have not traveled or been exposed, but I was experiencing some minor cold symptoms, so I recently stayed out of school, did the symptom checker, got tested, and was negative, and will be going back into school, so if any of you had any questions about that process, I have now recently experienced with that. But yeah, I guess I will definitely happily take any questions.
Thank you very much, Evan. I, I hope you're, I'm glad to hear it sounds like you're feeling better. I am curious, you mentioned that you didn't go out of state. Do you know if a number of your, your colleagues, classmates, or friends did travel out, out of state? And are you, I'm just curious, I'm not asking you to tattle on other people, are you aware of people traveled out of state and if they then followed the protocol for returning? Or do you just not, not know?
I know a few people who traveled, I'm not sure what they did, I assume that everyone, and I hope that everyone is definitely safe and following those guidelines upon returning. But I do think the majority of people stayed within state and did not have frequent student gatherings. I only know of a few travelers that did that one.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Any questions from anyone in the committee? And Ms. Bergstrom, I'll just point out that you are small little picture up there, so if you have questions, please just, um, don't, don't worry about calling out. Any questions from the committee?
I just wanna thank Evan for being with us, really appreciate it, especially during COVID when it's hard for us to gather, he's taking time out of the school schedule, we always appreciate, appreciate the contact to our students at the high school, so thank you, Evan, we always appreciate you being with us.
I second that.
I agree.
I, I do have one other question, you said pictures are being taken this week. I assume you're not getting pictures taken because you're a senior and you had senior pictures, or are you getting pictures taken anyway? I'm just curious what, what seniors are doing.
I think most seniors do have their pictures taken in normal years, those would be usually our cards or matter what, we submit as senior portraits for the yearbook. And I know that they should go into Aspen as well, so I think most seniors are also being pictures taken even if they won't really show up many places this year.
Okay. That's very helpful. Seeing no other questions. I know, as always, you're welcome, you're part of the committee, you're welcome to stay on and listen as long as you would like, but of course, I know you have classes, so I appreciate you taking a time out and you just can duck out when it's time for you to go, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to public comment. I will remind the members of the public that public comment has opportunity for you to speak about issues that fall under the purview of the school committee, it's not a dialogue, it's simply a chance for you to have your voice heard. And we will try to limit public comment to 20 minutes and three minutes per speaker. As you probably know, if you've been watching, I'm always very lenient on this, but we just do wanna try to get our meeting moving along, so the way we will be doing this today, as we usually do, is we will have public comment done by raising your digital hands, you should see it on the attendees list, you should be able to raise your hand. And we will call in the order in which their hands are raised.
Mr. Benalia, while we wait for that, can I just let you know that you are super hard for people. So the closer you can speak to your microphone, the better.
Thank you very much, I'm told that they're going to adjust my volume. If you could just, I'm gonna keep on talking, if you tell me when I sound better, I will keep on going. Can you hear me? Is it any better?
When you speak more, when you speak more slowly, it's easier to hear.
I'm sorry, I'm a city boy.
Okay, we have one for public comment.
Public comment, may I make a tech suggestion? If we all have our mics on mute except for you, can you activate your mic on your laptop and you can speak to folks through Zoom, just as if you're in a Zoom meeting, would that not pick you up?
I can, but I would like to, if possible, because there'll be other aspects of the meeting that.
Just for two, so people in public comment know they can speak as well as me.
So, we're just giving WinCam a moment to adjust some settings. They had, WinCam, just so everyone knows, had taken the, the whole studio here and adjusted it for town meeting, and they went to great lengths to get it, so it worked for town meeting. But then trying to come back into the setting we have here, which is just the four of us around the table, it was a little bit more difficult, so I appreciate all the work they're going through for that. So, Ms. Bergstrom, I'll, I'll ask if you can hear me any differently than you could hear me before.
It's a little bit better, but not much.
No, I see a lot of shaking heads. Hmm.
And while they're working on that, Mr. Benalia, the, the remote participants like Evan are very easy to hear, so we may be able to take public comment while they work on the microphones.
In other words, you're hearing him because he's coming through Zoom.
Yes.
All right, we have one person for public comment.
Okay, so I'm gonna let, uh, WinCam work on public, uh, excuse me, work on if they can increase my microphone. And at the same time, we have one member of the public who has raised their hand for public comment. Ms. Erica Hoffman, if you would elevate, Ms. Hoffman. Ms. Hoffman, if you would state your name and address for the committee.
Yes, Erica Hoffman, Stephen Bayland, Karen, and WinCam. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you very well.
Okay, great. So I just, and I was concerned about something that I heard over the, I think maybe a week ago, two weeks ago. And that's through Whiffy, the group, and I think it's an amazing group. They do so much for this town, they sponsor so many great events. But I have a little concern about one of the ones they wanna sponsor in relation to schools. I think you may be deciding whether to exit the grant today, and that's in relation to a grant that's for like the arts and humanities, and I fully support, you know, the, the, the programs and stuff. But I feel like it's quite a big difficult issue, as one of the board members owns like the company and one of the programs that would be benefactor from this cause, from those grant money. And I think that, you know, it's something that the parents and the principals have asked for, but I think they, how did they know that's asked for? Because they haven't done a survey, and I think more parents would be wanting programs that are sort of math and reading and writing. Because I feel that's what the, the kids are lacking this year, rather than doing sort of drama and arts and crafts during, you know, the school time and, and Whiffy's, you know, funds being used for that. So that's just sort of my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, for your comment, I appreciate it, as always. I ask if you could put Ms. Hoffman back as an attendee, and then I'm gonna return to, while we're doing public comments still, I just wanna see if people can hear any better with the microphones yet. No, I'm seeing shaking heads still.
Almost worse.
Almost worse. Would it be worth my trying a different microphone? Is it me or everyone?
How about my tone, my sound? Am I just this?
I can't hear Karen at all.
I'm like in the microphone.
Lori Kirby, can you hear me when I talk? Lori says.
In the meantime, we have one.
Lori says pianissimo.
Very loud.
Okay. Should we take our next?
But Chris, you're the clearest of, of anybody.
He said I'm the clearest of anyone you've heard?
So you.
That's not good.
I'm just curious, because we're going to, I'd like to finish the public comment if possible, and then maybe we'll have to take a brief break and see if we can adjust the microphone settings, so.
I think you could try that, Brian, through Zoom, if, if you activate your Zoom mic, because obviously those for public comment are participating through Zoom, and, and perhaps that's a way to dispatch that.
No feedback.
Okay.
Nope, does not work that way. So let's move on with public comment if at all possible. And I see we have.
Deleos.
The Deleos, if you would elevate them to speak, please. Hi, if you would state your name and address for the committee.
Susan DeLeo.
Good morning, Susan.
Hi, I'm, sorry, 24 is half drive, I'm not sure if you can hear me because I can't hear you, but, um, can someone nod that they can hear me, I guess? Okay, great. So, hi, Susan DeLeo, and I'm just calling to, I guess, pose a few, I know rhetorical questions to the committee. And those are that last week, Governor Baker came out and stated that the kids need to return to school, that the peripheral schools have been able to do it. We now have evidence that it is safe, and that he hopes that the schools can return to more in-person learning and full in-person learning by January. This was kind of intimated by the superintendent's emails from a couple of weeks ago or last week regarding January trying to rework the schedule and include more time for in-person learning. However, in a recent email to a, a, a parent, she stated that Chair Slusin said the schools would have to close down after Christmas break. So, um, I wanted to kind of address that, that discrepancy in information being sent out to the community, and I don't know if you guys can address that today. I also wanted to mention that the NWEA came out and found that students are falling terribly behind in math, specifically, across the nation. And I anecdotally have seen this with my fourth grader who, they had commence starting fractions work in March of third grade, and they have yet to even get there this year. And then it seems like, oh, they'll catch up, but in fact, for many things that you might wanna do for next year, including moving on to a different school, a private school, you need to know what you're supposed to be doing in third grade in order to take the test to get into these schools. So it is having an effect on these students, and, and generally, it's important for students to learn what they need to know to, to progress. So I wanted to know how the Winchester Public Schools is going to take that information from the NWEA and maybe apply it to their thoughts on having the MCAS to see where our students are. And finally, I, I hope that today we hear a little bit more about the plans for including more instructional time and more in-person learning for our students. Thank you.
Seeing no additional hands raised for public comment. I'd like to thank both of the members of the public who spoke, and I'd like to close public comment. And with that, I'd like to take a brief, I won't call it a break, I'd like to just take a moment for us to work on our microphones to see how we're hearing each other. So I would like to ask someone, Ms. Bergstrom perhaps, since you're a member of the committee, how you can hear me and whether it's any better than before.
It's much better than it was before, you occasionally cut out, but you're much clearer.
That's good. Now, out of curiosity, if I get closer, does it actually get better?
No.
Worse.
Worse, okay.
It's like efficient.
So, so right here is about optimal?
That's good.
Okay.
Can we try further around the table?
That's what I think.
Some were better and worse than others as well.
Mr. Nixon, could you test your?
Testing one, two, three.
That's good.
That was good?
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay, testing one, two, three.
Thumbs up.
Oh, good. Finally.
Good morning.
Thumbs up.
Great.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And with that, we will move on to our first report and discussion item, which is a health department update. I believe that Ms. Whitaker and Ms. Murphy are both here, if we could elevate them and welcome them to the table once they come along.
Hello, I'm here, Kathy Whitaker.
Good morning, thank you for coming.
Good morning.
Hi, Kathy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Murphy, I see you're there as well.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Very well. I, I wanna thank you both for coming this morning to our meeting. We, when we did our return to school planning, we discussed having you come and give a sort of an update on the state of the virus in the town going forward through the fall, and I believe this is actually our last meeting, well, not quite our last meeting, but close to our last meeting of the fall, so I'm thrilled that you could come today. And I would welcome any sort of update you can give on sort of how we're doing in the schools and the town, and any post-Thanksgiving thoughts you have.
Sure, so is it, are you able to share my screen?
We, we can allow you to share your screen and.
Can you?
Yeah, if you, if you.
All right, I'll start it.
Actually, it looks like all, anyone can share. Oh, no, all participants can share. So you should be able to share now. Oh, we don't need you to share, we need.
So I should stop sharing?
Stop sharing, we just.
Stop sharing.
Sorry.
Sorry.
So Ms. Murphy, you should be able to share your screen now. Thank you, sorry. We really will get good at this eventually, by the time COVID is gone, we'll, we'll be experts at this.
Sorry, can you hear me this way as well?
Yes, we hear you.
Perfect. Let's see. So we want to review the state of things regarding COVID right now. And we can run through a little bit of the data and talk about what we're, what is going on about town, and Kathy can discuss the cases that we are, are following. And to do that, why don't we start with our town dashboard? Do you wanna do that, Kathy, or would you like me to go through some other data first?
No, 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 let's take a look at the dashboard first, so you'll get an overview of the entire town.
I may have the same technology issue as I did before, let's see. Can we get there? Here we are. Can you see that, Kathy?
Big fingers at anybody's technology.
No.
We still just see the, the PowerPoint.
One of us could just go to the dashboard and we can share a screen, we've done that before.
Yes, I think, I think she was about to do that.
Oh, okay.
I think that was her.
That might be a better way to go, Chris, if you don't mind.
Mr. Nixon, if you're willing to share that, that would be great.
I'll have to go look for it, hold on.
Hold on.
Or if you have a second screen, Ms. Murphy? A second tab?
Is the PowerPoint on the dashboard?
No, we just wanna share the dashboard.
Okay.
I do have a second tab open.
Uh, let's see.
All right, I have it.
If you can just go ahead and share that, Mr. Nixon, that would be great.
Does Jen need to unshare?
No, you should be able to overshare her.
This will stop, okay.
Okay.
Overshare, I never thought about using the word that way. Okay. How does this look, guys?
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. So these numbers are from, they were last updated yesterday at 4:00 p.m. And as of that time, you can see we have 27 confirmed cases in the town.
That are active.
285 that have recovered and eight deaths. And the, the eight deaths go back to probably last spring at the latest, we have had no deaths in many months. So confirmed cases, as you can see, is 320. And if you can scroll down to see the seven schools in Winchester. Presently, we have 16 active cases in the schools, spread out amongst four of the schools. For a total of 59 cases in the schools since September. Which really, I think, is quite good. I, we have been really scrutinizing and when we do interviews with a positive case to try every which way to find out if any of the, the cases have been spread in the school. And on only one occasion, and that was several, probably a month ago, did we see that in one of the elementary schools. The cases, particularly in the high school, we are finding out that it's exposure outside of school during sporting events or social events. And in the case where, in the only situation in which we had school transmission in a classroom, is what we did is we brought in a mobile testing unit to the school, so that we could test every student in that classroom to make sure there was not more spread, and there was not. Every student, and there was, I believe, nine students that we tested were all negative. We have, I mean, we have attempted, in fact, we made a call to the state over the weekend to see if Winchester High School would qualify to have a mobile testing unit. But because there was no documented in-school spread, that was denied. Okay.
And by that, she means, in other words, there was a commonality amongst the kids outside of the school setting.
Can I just jump in with a, just a clarification?
The other slides, or does anybody have any questions so far, or?
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker, Mr. Nixon has a question.
Just, it's a question or clarification, but we can come back to it once we let Ms. Whitaker and Ms. Murphy kind of get through their presentation, but when we say there's a commonality outside the school, I just wanna be clear, there's also a commonality in the school, because they're all school students, so they're all going into the building and they're sharing some space together, is that not correct?
Yes, but while they may be sharing, you know, they may be in the same building together, it doesn't mean that they necessarily were within direct contact with each other during the school day, and, and that's important.
I have a.
Okay.
I have a clarification also.
Ms. Bergstrom.
When you say, Murphy, does that mean that there is no commonality in the hallways, the lunchrooms, the gymnasium, any other public spaces, or are you only speaking sharing spaces?
Oops, sorry, you cut out at the end, Michelle, sorry.
You, are you only speaking about common classrooms? Or are you speaking that they had no commonalities among each other in the hallways, in restrooms, in cafeterias, in public spaces? Or did they only not have commonalities in classrooms?
So they weren't, they weren't, there weren't any close contacts defined for a particular person, they didn't meet that definition?
Right, but commonalities, I, I'm not sure you answered the question. So when they don't have any commonalities, are we only speaking about classroom spaces?
No, Michelle, during our interview, we were very, very clear that using the definition of a close contact, were you closer than six feet to any of your friends? And they say, for a total of 15 minutes over the course of that day, and they say, no, they weren't. We asked them about their, what they did for lunch. We asked them, you know, who they were with. Were they with any teachers for, with direct contact, closer than six feet for 15 minutes? We really, really do ask them multiple, multiple questions.
Thank you. And I'm sure you do, but it sounds like we're trusting kids to know other kids they've been around. What about students that they may have been around that they have no idea who are? There are 600 kids in the building on a given day.
Well, hopefully, they're staying six feet away from each other with their masks on.
Right, but we can't account for the kids that the kids don't know.
But they do know, in general, they seem to have a good sense of who they spend the most time with in direct contact with that person, right? So the casual person walking by doesn't constitute a close contact by definition, right? So that person would not be identified and quarantined or any other action taken.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Ms. Bergstrom.
I'll hold my questions so we can...
Yeah, let's continue on on this for a second, and we can come back. No questions or, Ms. Bergstrom, I'm not ending your question. I mostly just think, I wonder if we can move forward a little bit, and we can come back to certainly on that point that you're making, which I think is a valid one. Thank you.
So Kathy, would you like me to keep scrolling down here, or Jen?
Do you want to, Jen, go just to the PowerPoint you put together?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, Jen, I'll stop sharing now?
Yep.
Okay.
Ms. Murphy should be able to overshare as well.
Okay, so you can see my screen then?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a trend line from the outset of COVID until November 27th. And it shows, obviously, we're on a dramatic increase here in case, in cases, basically starting in, towards the end of September through October, we really saw a large increase in cases. And that trend is continuing, in fact. As of this month, we have 81 cases so far for November. So this really is a dramatic increase that we're seeing in the community. And I can't, I can't state enough how our behavior, what we're doing, and the precautions we take are impacting the transmission in the community. You know, anything from travel, we talked about, the student touched on Thanksgiving. And I've heard anecdotally many stories of people traveling, unfortunately, to higher-risk states. And I can only hope that when they returned, they either quarantined or tested until they were found to be negative before resuming their normal daily activities. And I do hope that people are being very careful in the people that they are around, and they're not socializing closely with people outside of their household. And I do think that at this point, some people are a little bit immune to the messaging that's going on. I think we all sound like a broken record when we discuss a lot of these safety precautions, masking, distancing, hand washing, and so forth. But I can't state enough that these things are actually, they're working. And they're our best tools, right? We have limited tools to combat this and to limit the spread. And I think that we have to take advantage of those basic tools and precautions to keep one another safe. So I do hope the community does pay attention to that messaging. It's going to be important as we go forward, as we're spending more time indoors. And obviously, we do have holidays, additional holidays coming up, where historically, traditionally, people like to get together. And that's just not a good idea to do that with people outside of our household this year, unfortunately. It's a temporary inconvenience. And I've experienced it, obviously, myself. I zoomed on Thanksgiving. I didn't have outside family over, and didn't go to other people's homes. And I, it's hard, it's difficult, and I fully acknowledge that. But it's necessary.
So Jen, can I ask a question on that slide?
Oh, sorry. Yeah.
So we also had a lockdown Thanksgiving, so I appreciate you making that point. I know many people were making safe choices for the holiday. So I want to begin, just my question, by recognizing that correlation does not equal causation. And I agree that there's risk when we travel outside the state. But when you look at that graph, and you reflect on the fact that we opened schools in September, that was a major operational change in this town, and you see the surge in cases. And when you recognize that we had both moderate-risk and high-risk sporting activities happening in the Commonwealth throughout the summer in accordance with the rules from the Office of Environmental Affairs, are there conclusions that, either that can be drawn, or are there not some questions that we should be asking when we say we're not seeing school-based spread, but I'm seeing a graph that's shooting up? And that activity starts with the opening of school, is that not a reasonable line of questioning to pursue, or might there be another explanation for that? Because I'm assuming that not everyone in Winchester is now traveling out of state in September. That happens. We have actually employees who live outside Massachusetts who drive in for work. But when I look at a chart like that, I'm trying to think, what has changed in our town? And to me, the biggest sort of macro change has been that we opened up schools.
Yeah, so I, I don't think you can draw necessarily that conclusion that schools are the cause. I think that what you're going to find is, we've been spending a lot of, a lot more time indoors all around, right? Everybody has been in indoor settings. I think the summer was, we experienced a lull in cases. I think we were, we were all outside. Restaurants were outside. There was a lot less indoor dining. There were a lot less indoor settings. I think people got used to wearing masks more and more. I think the governor also got more strict with that as well. So yeah, I don't think, I don't think you, we want to say that, that schools are the ca, overall cause of this. Certainly, and Kathy, you can speak to this a little bit better, we've had quite a lot of activity in clusters around certain sporting events, because I believe they have picked up since the onset of school. For example, indoor hockey, indoor basketball, as well as, what was, Kathy, what was the third?
It was indoor cheer competitions.
Cheer competitions, correct. Okay, so those, those were the, the major indoor sporting events that led to cluster outbreaks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Ms. Murphy?
Can I follow up on Mr. Nixon's question?
I had a question too.
Ms. Bergstrom, and then...
I'm curious to know how you know whether the cases are coming from sports to schools or coming from schools to sports.
Can you repeat that question?
Could you repeat that question, Ms. Bergstrom?
Hi, Kathy.
If you could repeat the question, Ms. Bergstrom, one of our members had trouble hearing you.
Sure. I'm curious to know if we can't trace back to an index case, how we know whether the, and follow up to Mr. Nixon's question, since we had sports successfully over the summer, including any indoor sports. I'm curious to know how you know whether the cases are coming from sports to schools or from schools to sports.
Well, again, during our interview, we'll find out that someone is on a club hockey team or whatever, and that, the cases came specifically from that team. And they happen to be Winchester High School students. Same with basketball. We're tracing it back to outside leagues, really. In fact, I don't...
I understand that there's...
I don't think we, we don't have any cases from any high school sporting events.
In our town?
In our town, yes.
Correct. And I don't think, Michelle, I don't, Ms. Bergstrom, I don't think that, that anyone can say with 100% certainty necessarily a lot about this, right? I think we're doing, we do the best we can with the evidence that we are able to collect as we do a case investigation and contact tracing, and speak to our sick people. We speak to the people they were in contact with. And we try, we try to deduce to the, to the greatest extent we can what may have been, what may have led to them acquiring COVID. We've had many household, cases of household transmission in town, and as well as, this has been a trend among, in the state as well, where typically, we would see one adult member of a family bring COVID into the home, and through our case investigation, really can't identify necessarily how that index case acquired it. There was no, you know, activity, per se, that led to us to be able to directly point to them acquiring it. And so in that case, and this is something, again, they're seeing throughout the state, so to try to get, to try to drill down on this better, the state has actually altered our interview questions and have added on quite a few questions to try to ask people further, identifying perhaps activities that could have led to them being exposed. So we hope that that will bear fruit. And we've just started to use that quite recently. And it's a lengthy interview now, and it goes over quite a lot of information, but I hope that it does amount to us being able to point to more activities that, that people are engaged in that might, we might need to warn people about.
Can I suggest, Mr. Jen, this is all really...
Right, because as Ms. Whitaker said, that she doesn't feel that the, the number is all that, all that steep for Winchester, but in cases per thousand are much higher than our peer communities. We're at 18.3 per 100,000. Lexington's at 5.4, Bedford's at 10.5. So I'm curious if you have any thoughts on, that does seem worse to me. It seems like we're not doing as good of a job controlling community spread as our neighboring communities. So I'm curious what public health is recommending we do as schools and as a community to control that spread.
May I ask that we move on potentially to the next, I want to come back to this, but I do want to get through the presentation that Ms. Murphy has. And I think she might be able to address that with some of her next two slides, some of the things you're addressing. So if that's okay.
Sure, sorry, sorry to get hung up here. So moving through the slides, we have, this is just an age distribution chart. One of the things we noticed last month in October was that the, the case rate in the age group 40 to 49 had really jumped up quite a bit. And so that's, that's an interesting age category to note. And we did, I don't know if folks have seen our digital doses that we've been pushing out with some, some good information. And this, this, this was one of them, just simply highlighting the fact that that age group had seen a spike, and perhaps people, asking people in that age group to consider what they're doing, consider their behavior out and about, and their risk of exposure. I just wanted to highlight the positivity rate for our town with, compared to surrounding communities. And you can see Wuburn and Burlington have quite a high positivity rate. Winchester's 1.64%. Last week, we were at 1.4%, I believe, 1.41%, I believe. But as you can see, our, the number of tests has increased. So for last week, it was noted that 3,607 tests were conducted on Winchester residents, which, this is great. We had been in the 2000s for a while, and I think the pre-Thanksgiving rush really, really bolstered that, that data. So to your point, Michelle, you can see that, yes, compared to Lexington, we are, we are higher. That is noted, yes. This is just a breakdown of the infections that we've seen in students in our public schools, the most cases being from the high school. This is out of a total of 38 student cases. And again, this data goes through November 27th, so I expect there will be an adjustment once the month is over. And we will adjust the chart on the dashboard to reflect the total number of cases, confirmed cases for November, probably within the week.
I do have a quick clarification on this one.
But the high school has seen the most in McCall Middle School at 22%, has seen its fair share as well.
There's a question about, a clarification about this chart in particular, Mr. Nixon, if it's just a clarification.
Ms. Murphy, just a quick clarification, if you could, for us. That large slice, 22% private, am I reading that right? There's different blues here. Is the, is the private 22, or is it 7?
No, no, the private, right, the private is 7. The 22% is McCall.
Okay.
The 24% of the high school, oh yeah, the blue's right, I understand. And then the 3%, the other blue is Ambrose.
Okay. And then so just a follow-up clarification, we do have students whose permanent address is in Winchester, and they attend a private school in Massachusetts. Am I right in assuming that the 7% reflects positivity among that demographic as opposed to students who have a permanent address in Winchester, but who may be in a private school either outside Winchester or outside Massachusetts? In other words, we, we have kids whose permanent address is in Winchester, they put their head on a pillow in Winchester every night. Their private school could be some distance away. So whereas all the other slices of this pie reflect students who go to school here in Winchester, does that make sense? Trying to figure out...
Yes.
Tell us a little more about that, that sort of definition of that demographic of what private means.
You're, you're correct. So it would be a Winchester resident, a student whose physical address is in Winchester, but attends school outside of Winchester.
But in Massachusetts.
Or perhaps, or perhaps a school like St. Mary's, which is in Winchester, but is a private school.
And, and but, but all of those schools, those privates they attend, those would be still in Massachusetts and not out of state?
Those, all of the private school students are in Massachusetts.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just want to talk about symptoms and those of our cases who have displayed symptoms. I think this, this gets at transmission, because obviously, the, if you, if you exhibit symptoms, the, you have a greater risk of transmitting, transmitting the virus. So I think this is just interesting data, just to run through. So for all of our, all of our cases in town since the outset of COVID, we have seen that 74% of our cases have displayed symptoms. And this obviously runs every age group. For our student cases, this would be for our total students, 61% have exhibited symptoms, those who, of those who are positive. Now, to break it out even further, the students who are 10 years or less, those that displayed symptoms, 53% exhibited symptoms. I'm sorry, 47% exhibited symptoms. And for students 11 to 18 years old, 73% of the cases exhibited symptoms. So this really follows national data that we're hearing about. The, the younger children don't tend to exhibit symptoms when they're ill, when they have the, the infection, whereas the older, older you get, the more likely you are to exhibit symptoms. I just wanted to mention that there is a new quarantine protocol as of November 18th. Everyone is still required to quarantine as a close contact for the full 14 days. However, there is now a test-out option. For people who are asymptomatic, you can test out after 10 days if you do receive a negative test result by PCR analysis. And then that test would have to be taken on day eight or later. It's a bit confusing with the days, but just know that your quarantine period can be shortened if you are asymptomatic and you do receive a negative test result. And so now, all of our nurses who follow our close contacts are imparting these instructions to them. And we hope to see those people who are asymptomatic be able to resume their normal activities like school sooner. It does shave a few days off of the full quarantine period. And we do monitor those cases, however. And we do monitor those cases, however, those close contacts through the full 14 days, just to be certain. But there is a new test out option that we have actually been, been following for a couple of weeks. Winchester is offering COVID testing. So this will be two dates, one for town employees. And I believe Judy sent that out to the, to employees as all, as we did on the town side as well, to all of our employees. That'll be December 3rd, so this Thursday from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Jenks Center. And then there will be a date this Sunday, December 6th, from 12:00 to 4:00 for all town residents. And it will be indoors, so people will park and walk into the Jenks. But it will be very well spaced. We're having an appointment-based signup. And so that will control the flow of people going into the Jenks Center. And we are utilizing the entire facility, so there really will be plenty of spacing for people. And I, this is how we ran our flu clinics and it worked quite well. We felt like it went very smoothly and safely. All of this testing is free to people. There is the advanced online registration, as I mentioned, so that you can fill out a Google Doc, so that the ambulance company, Armstrong Ambulance, who is doing the collection, will be able to just take that information that we, that people have populated into the Google Doc and simply transfer it directly to the Broad Institute. So there will be two pieces of information that we'll need. One is the online registration for the Broad. And the other one will be for people to sign up for an appointment. And that will go live, I believe, for town residents today on our website. But I do believe all employees have that link to be able to start signing up now. And so this, we hope, is just a, a first step towards further testing. Testing has always been something we're missing and would be an excellent tool, especially if we could do it on a regular, consistent basis, you know, to some degree. It's been one of the tools we've been missing all along and it would be wonderful to do that. It obviously takes, takes money to do that, which is a question that will have to be answered. But I am going to continue going down the path of looking into what we could in fact bring to town, if not townwide, but perhaps for the schools. And I know that the, the science and medical expert panel have, have done a lot of work on that. And I, I am thankful for that work. The state has just put out guidance around, around this issue, around testing. And they have allowed us to tap into their state contract for vendors like labs and so forth. So I will be looking into that further to at least be able to put forth some recommendations and suggestions, should we be able to go forward with that.
Jen, is there a maximum number of appointments on those days?
Oh, sorry, yes. Actually, there is. So for the four hours, it will be 15 people every 10 minutes. So for a total of 360 people at each event.
Ms. Murphy, since you're on this slide, I was going to ask at the end, for the town residents signup, are you looking, are you asking for people who are symptomatic? For people who are asymptomatic? For people who are worried they might? Who are you, who would you like to see come in? If you could cherry pick the people in town you think would be most appropriate to have come in that day, who would you like to see? And who, since we have a limited number of spots?
Right. So certainly anyone who is experiencing symptoms, absolutely. Others who feel like they may have been exposed or engaged in some type of risky behavior or have been at an event where they feel like they may have been exposed, certainly those folks as well, I believe, I would put to the top of the list. However, it is open to anyone.
Okay.
Can I ask one more clarifying question?
I just think that's helpful because I could imagine a number of people saying, hey, it's free. I should sign up and go see if I have COVID. And probably the vast majority of people in town who are taking precautions should be holding those spots for people who need to be tested. So I just want, I, I think your point is good on. Ms. Bergstrom, yes?
So is that also true for the town employees? And I assume that includes school employees under town employees. Are we trying to prioritize people who have been exposed? Or are we trying to, I hate to use the word surveillance test, but I guess that's what asymptomatic testing would be. Are we trying to surveillance test our town employees? And if they are unable to get a spot on the third, could they also attempt to get a spot on the sixth?
Well, to your second point, I think if they're, if they're a town employee and a Winchester resident, they could go to either their, you know, we didn't put conditions on any of this, really. So I can imagine that many, many teachers and other employees perhaps who are, who are subject to more people in a, in a smaller amount of space would feel like they are at greater risk, so would want to go get tested. You know, but again, this isn't conditioned, so any employees eligible to, to sign up?
Thank you. Ms. Bollinger?
I am just wondering about the December 3rd town employees' hours. And will, or assuming that many teachers would like to participate, will they have enough time if the hours are just going to 5:00 PM and teachers are getting off at, off of work at 4:00 PM roughly?
I'm sorry, I know this was the discussion between Dr. Evans and Lisa Wong to try to ensure that it was, we allowed enough time for teachers to take advantage of this. I'm, I'm hopeful that that is the case.
I can jump in here and confirm that for most elementary employees, they can get there by 2:30. And those who are able to, who aren't working directly with students, who are able to get there for the 1 o'clock, there will be a group of town employees, I'm sure, who will take advantage of those slots. The high school folks, because it's right across the parking lot at Jenks, should be able to get there by, between, you know, at the earliest 3:15. So it does leave some time. I would assume the elementary group and other sort of district level employees will do the 1 to 3-ish slot and then high school folks after that. So there, and there are a fairly large number of employees who are also town residents and the December 6th date might work better for them. And so I've encouraged them to sign up for the December 6th lot and leave the other slots for out-of-town employees.
Thank you very much. Well, we interrupted you. Well, you still have one more slide. Thank you.
One more slide, yes. Sorry, I just wanted to touch on vaccine distribution, when it becomes available, because I feel like there's, I see light at the end of the tunnel. And it's good to be hopeful, right? And so we have been told by the State Department of Public Health that they expect to actually receive small allotments in December. And those will be directed towards acute care facilities, as they should. And so that, so vaccine distribution will be a series of prioritizations. And I'm sure you've heard in the news, phases being talked about. And this will be phase one in December. And of course, there'll be other phases. And we will probably see some sort of mass distribution of vaccine in phases three and four. In other words, where it gets to the health department, we are able to distribute those on a townwide basis once all of the other priority groups have been met. You know, healthcare workers, special, special populations, like vulnerable populations and so forth. And so mass distribution on a public, public-wide level would come probably, I'm being told, April or May. And again, these aren't fixed months. Please don't hold me to anything. This is what I'm being told. I just like to pretend this is going to happen and it's a real thing and April and May is going to be here before you know it. So I'm, I'm glad to be able to share that at least glimmer of hope with you.
That's very exciting. Thank you very much. I, I, I know Ms. Bergstrom had questions and I sort of let her ask, but then also held off till the end because I wanted to give you a chance to finish your presentation. And I know other members here have, do have questions. So I'd like to open it up to the committee for any questions. Of you, again, thanking you. And I'd like to start with Ms. Bergstrom because I did actually ask her to hold off on her question till we got to the end. So Ms. Bergstrom, if you have additional questions or want to continue with the question you had, I would welcome that now.
So I, I guess I would just return to, I understand the positivity rate. Another way to look at our infection rate is by incidence per 100,000. And I shared with you from the state dashboard what our incidence per 100,000 is compared to some of our similar communities. Since then, I've also heard you talk about the impact of more widespread testing. I guess I'm curious to know what other mitigation strategies we can take as a community, as a school district, to reduce that incidence rate in Winchester, which is considerably higher than our peer communities. And also accordingly, is there a daily incidence rate or positivity rate? Back to one of our public comment questioners that indicate, would indicate to you as a Department of Public Health, that it would be safe to return students to school? And is there a positivity rate conversely that would indicate to you that we should actually be closing our high school, our middle school, our elementary schools for a period of weeks? It's a big question.
Yeah. So to, to, the first part of your question and what other public health measures or steps can be taken to try to mitigate this is one that we are constantly grappling with, but most especially now. As I alluded to earlier, I feel like, you know, when we are reaching out to people now, whether it be a case, whether it be a close contact, people are getting, are feeling like most cases are able to ride this out well. Most people are being hospitalized. Now, at least I'm speaking to our data, our cases. They're, they're seeing everybody recover. They go through a bit of illness, whether it be mild, whether it be, you know, moderate, like a flu-like illness, and they're, they're recovering. So, so word is getting around that, that, oh, it's not so bad. People having that attitude of being a little bit complacent. And I, I fear for that, only because we are still seeing people who are seemingly healthy and no underlying causes, and it affects them greatly. You will have those cases. And you don't know who is going to be the one, the seemingly healthy person, who experiences a far more severe illness. And so I would caution people about that complacency. So, so we're grappling with this now because it's hard to change behavior and perception once people have, sort of have, have that in their, in their minds. And so the, the Board of Health is very willing to take further measures, further restrictions, if, if need be. It's difficult to do it in isolation, so we have started discussions with our surrounding communities to see if we could do it collectively, should we need to go the route of further scaling back the activities that we, we now enjoy to some extent. So, you know, those conversations are happening. I feel like collectively, we would have more of an impact if we were to take those, those further restrictions. So those discussions are happening. We are trying to highlight for people through our constant messaging, you know, really trying to get to the, the subsets of our cases where we're seeing, the subsets of our population where we're seeing the most cases. And really trying to do more targeted messages around that. And I think that with our new interview data that we, as I mentioned earlier, hopefully be able to hone in on what those activities are that are driving our cases and be able to, you know, target those folks. So, so those discussions around what other public health measures we can do are certainly being taken, are certainly underway. And I do want to add that if, if, I will certainly be pushing for, for more testing. I think that there's a desire there, that more data would, would absolutely help us. Surveillance, surveillance testing is such a key, key piece of this. I think especially if we want to keep schools successful and try to keep a minimum of, of cases. So, you know, those discussions are all being had, Michelle. There's no concrete plan yet, but it's all in the works. I think that the time, time is now to, to really be, to, to be serious about what else we can do. And what was the, sorry, second part of your question?
So the second part of my question was, is there a daily incidence rate, a case per 100,000? What measures are you using from public health to advise Dr. Evans and his committee on when we could return more students to the building safely? And conversely, is there a daily incidence rate, a case per 100,000? What would you using, that you would recommend closing a building or the district for a number of weeks?
So I think, you know, I've been utilizing the framework, sorry, the framework document that we, that we set out at the beginning prior to the onset of school. So, you know, that, that has been my guide internally in terms of, of calculating what's been, been going on in our schools and the number of active cases that we have at any one time, as well as a percentage for any cohort. So I've been, you know, tracking that all along. The, the flip side of your question regarding when to put more kids in, in school is one that I haven't necessarily, I have, I've been so focused on trying to minimize our cases and trying to track the number of cases that we're having because my fear was that our winter was not going to, was going to get worse. So I've been more focused on, on the cases and trying to keep those, the illness out of the school that, you know, the conversation about getting more kids into school, we really haven't, we haven't really focused on as of yet.
I guess I'm asking because there also seems to be a narrative that particularly elementary school students aren't as high of risk. And that though it appears that we've also seen a rise, similar to the rise in 40, 45-year-olds, there's been a similar spike between 0 and 19-year-olds in our community. And you were saying that about 47% of those kids develop symptoms in the young kids and 75% in the middle and high school kids. So I'm wondering if any of that affects your view on having students in school? Do you still feel that young kids aren't as affected as the older kids?
Kathy, do you want to weigh, I mean, Kathy would have a better sense of...
Ms. Whitaker?
Of whether the schools should open, you know, fully or because of the younger kids, do better? Or I, I don't understand the question. It's both. So are you seeing, are you continuing to see that younger kids aren't developing symptoms, aren't developing as severe symptoms, aren't developing post-COVID syndrome? No, I mean, I, I am seeing children that have the full gamut of symptoms, you know, that are sick, I mean, flu-like symptoms, you know, the coughing, the high fevers, the aches and the pains and whatever. I mean, I am. Do we know, Kathy or Jen, do we know how kids are recovering from this? Are we tracked? I'm sorry. That's okay. Do we track post-COVID at all? Oh, not post-COVID, no. No, we do not. But certainly, I haven't heard anything from the school nurses of any children that, you know, develop problems after the fact. Once they're off of isolation, they have done very well. I, I have not heard anything disappointing, I should say.
Thank you both.
So I guess, I guess Jen, then that goes back to, so does that weigh into any metrics for returning the younger students to school? Or do you still feel that it's not safe to do that?
Well, let me think. You know, I, certainly, I think on the whole, we see less transmission in the younger kids, on, on the whole. You're asking me a question, do I think it's safe, though? I mean, I'm, I'm, I still feel like I, you know, we're still collecting more data. Flu season hasn't really kicked in. I think masks and all of our other mitigation measures are doing a really good job at keeping the numbers as low as they have, as well as our contact tracing. I think all of our... I think all of those measures are actually working really well. And I was pleasantly surprised how well it's all been working actually, so I'm very happy with that. Yeah, I think this is, this should be a conversation that, that we definitely pick up at a later time and we put more thought into it for sure. I don't want to say, I don't want to say it's not a good idea because I, I do think having kids in the school building has such value to it. But again, it would have to be a thoughtful, a thoughtful way that we do this. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. I'm going to move around for additional questions.
I had a question.
Ms. Bollinger?
I had been wondering if you had seen an uptick in the number of tests and it sounds based on your numbers between November 12th and the 25th that there is an increase in the numbers of people, the number of people who are being tested. And I'm just wondering, when do you get notification of how many people have tested either from some, either from like the stop, the spread sites or other hospitals, et cetera? Is it like every two weeks or do you get it on a daily basis?
That data is pulled right from the DPH dashboard, which is produced at a local level, a town by town level every Thursday.
Every Thursday, okay.
And it, and it covers the, the previous two weeks worth of.
All right, so it's with a rolling, yes.
It's over 14 days, rolling 14.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshon.
Hello, thank you, Brian. I wanted to bring up two things. First of all, someone mentioned Governor Baker earlier, asking us to do more in-person learning. And there's a lot more to what he said than just simply get your kids back in school. He was talking specifically to school districts with a lot of physical space, the right number of staff, the perfect budget and everything just so, and who are still doing remote learning. I don't know of specific districts that are doing that and I think he is lacking in some of the necessary data and the nuances of why educators and local school committees are choosing, are making the choices they are making. So putting that aside for a minute, we're all interested in getting our kids back to school. But to ask our public health department whether it's safe, I think is a much, we need to delve much deeper because we have to consider staffing, we have to consider facilities. We can't actually know perfectly well which of our many, many accommodations are the reason why we have low transmission in schools. I haven't seen anyone study that data very broadly on a national scale. We, though we can't pinpoint exactly where the transmissions are, Jen and Kathy are looking at the trends overall, so they can't say that we're not seeing specific transmission within schools. My point is just to say that this is a much, much more complex picture with a lot of unanswered questions so that we can't really jump at this point and start talking about reopening schools more fully. What we have, what the educators have chosen to, to promote, the hybrid model is working in Winchester. We haven't seen some of the crazy numbers of transmissions within the schools that other districts in the nation have with, like in Florida where they're fully open and no masks are mandated. And so we, we have a controlled process and system at this point. And I, so I want to caution us from jumping ahead too far because we don't even know what the Thanksgiving holiday is going to have an impact down the road. So I want to thank Jen and Kathy, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we realize that their focus is the public health lens. And we need to hear from Dr. Evans as time goes on, what is the educational, the best model educationally for our kids given our budget restrictions? And so I just wanted to take that step back and say, everyone is doing the best they can with the information we have, but there is a ton of data that is just not getting to our public health officials and our school officials. There's no money coming in from either the federal government or the state government that is making any, any impact whatsoever in giving us magically more space and more staff and all of the things we would need to run our district much more in person, with much more in-person time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshon. Some good points there. Mr. Nixon, I saw you had your hand raised before as well.
Everybody hear me okay? So I, I heard several, several points that Ms. Murphy made and a, a point that Ms. Bergstrom made in her questions that were meaningful to me. I want to go back to, I think our last joint meeting with representatives from the Board of Health was when we were your guests at your meeting. That was probably three weeks ago or something at that point. And I, I believe I, I had some questions or expressed some concern at that time about statements that we are making about whether, when we say students, when we say we learned from the Board of Health that we had a positive case at one school or another, but that that student was not infectious when last in school. I want to be very clear with everybody about where my head is. I, I, I've been uncomfortable with that and I'm still uncomfortable with that. And I would, I would like to get a better sense, you know, today in our discussion, who's really making that determination? And, and I believe that's based largely on some guidelines from the CDC. I want to share, and I want to tell you why I'm, I'm really dwelling on this. And interestingly, while, Ms. Murphy, while you were making your presentation, I got a CNN alert that the Journal of Clinical, the Journal of Clinical Infectious Diseases has just released a study last night that based on a review of blood samples collected by the American Red Cross, it appears we had COVID infection in the United States as early as December 13th of 2019. And that's really interesting, right? Because what, what, to me, what that says is, we just don't know what we don't know and we continue to gather information. And in my mind, it's why adjectives are really important. Adjectives like that a student perhaps is presumed not to be infection, or we believe this, they are presumed this way, they're presumed that way. So because this is a global health pandemic, I feel more confident when we make declaratory statements that it's something that we know. And certainly at any given time, we're making statements based on what science is telling us, but then the science can change. I believe it was at that last joint meeting, we heard from Dr. Gubi, who was really advocating for some increased testing. And since that time, there was a review that was published by The Lancet that you all may be familiar with on the public health side. It was published on, I think, November 19th. And it is SARS-CoV-2, as well as COV and MERS-CoV, but we're not interested in those. So SARS-CoV-2, viral load dynamics, duration of viral shedding, and infectious, and infectiousness. And the first line of the summary is clear. It says, "Background viral load kinetics and the duration of viral shedding are important determinants for disease transmission." And in this review that was just recently published, it includes findings from 79 studies of over 5,300 individuals who were positive for SARS-CoV-2. What they found is that the mean duration of RNA shedding was 17 days, that's just the mean, but maximum shedding duration was up to 83 days. And so the bottom line is, I understand it from this report and some of the physicians that I reached out to speak to about it is this, that you can shed virus RNA for over a month from, where this is from the upper respiratory tract, I should be clear. We find trace RNA in other places, but, but this is where our concern about aerosolization comes from. So you can shed virus RNA for over a month, between 17 and 83 days, but you're infectious mostly for that first week, which that speaks to the quarantine guidelines. If you have symptoms, you're infectious for a few days before and maybe five to seven days into symptoms. But importantly, if you're asymptomatic and you get a nasal swab, not a culture, but a nasal swab, and it's positive, then all you know is that you either have coronavirus or you had it, present tense or past tense. You may have had it 60 days ago. Then asymptomatic and spreading it to others 55 to 65 days ago, and you could still be positive today on the nasal swab. And so when I think about, how does this apply to our students? If students are asymptomatic at the time of testing, so I'm going to go back to Ms. Bergstrom's question about the index case. If a student is asymptomatic at the time of testing and they're positive, then we really don't know when they were infectious based on the latest reports, as I understand it. And I'd like somebody to tell me if we're, if, if I'm not understanding this right or the physicians I'm speaking to are misinterpreting this. So when we send out messages to the community that say, student was not infectious, I'm, I want to be really sure and certain that we know that. Because my understanding is this is really what makes coronavirus so difficult, is that if up to 40 are asymptomatic, 40%, and I, I love the slide that Ms. Murphy showed, so when we look at students as an aggregate, 61% had symptoms, 39 did not, so that's virtually the same percentage that comes out of this report. What makes it so difficult is if up to 40% are, are asymptomatic, then if that student, and I go back to summer conversations with Ms. Murphy, her three concerns were open lunch, sports and transportation, I think in that order, but don't quote me on that. If an asymptomatic student takes their mask down even just to eat or drink and then they spread it to someone else, and then one person finally gets sick, in other words, I mean show symptoms, and then the contact tracing starts, but only with that person who developed symptoms, then we may miss entirely the original asymptomatic case, which was what I think Ms. Bergstrom was calling the index case. And so I think what this really speaks to is that call for more widespread testing, which has a lot of hurdles, and I think we talked about that in a pretty fulsome way at the last meeting. I, I just want some discussion and I'd love to hear feedback from Jen Murphy or Kathy Whitaker about this because I feel like we're being very definitive when we're saying students were not infectious and I'm not sure that we really know that. And so I'm a little uncomfortable with that.
Like, Chris, let me explain. Can you hear me, Chris? For everybody?
Yeah, we can hear you. We can hear you well, thank you.
Okay, let me explain what we have been told in public health, based upon scientific information and, and studying all these cases from the beginning of the pandemic, is that they have come up with criteria to determine infectious periods. And for example, if, if someone is, has symptoms, they are infectious two days before the symptom onset. And they are infectious for 10 days after some symptom onset. And based upon many, 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 many scientific studies, doing testing beyond day 10, day 11, day 12, that they are no longer infectious. For someone who is a close contact or for anybody who gets tested for whatever reason, travel, whatever, and they have no symptoms and they test a PCR positive, how infectious period is determined is they are considered infectious two days prior to their test date. And when we say that a student was not infectious when they were in school, that, that's how we determine it. If they have symptoms and were they in school two days before symptom onset? No, they were not. So they were not infectious when they were in school. And we use that same criteria for asymptomatic students. Were they in school two days prior to their positive test result? A lot of, and we have a lot, we say that a lot of the students, as you know, were not infectious when they were in school. And a large percentage of, percentage of that, because they are students who were quarantined because their parents were positive prior to them. So the kids were quarantined and had not been in school for days prior to their infectious period. So that's sort of how we determine that. And that is, I know that's a common question because someone literally stopped me the other day and said, can you please, I don't understand, how, why was the, the student not in school prior to, you know, their positive test result? And that is the reason a lot, a lot of the kids have been quarantined prior to their positive test result.
So I, I appreciate very much, Kathy, that explanation of, you know, the criteria that we're using. I guess my question, and it's probably more appropriately directed to Ms. Murphy, if, if I understood Kathy.
And Chris, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, yeah, please.
As far as people who had COVID, shedding the virus still after 80 days, that is true. That is absolutely true. But after day 10 of someone who has COVID, they are no longer infectious. But, and we recommend in fact that no one gets tested after they've had COVID because they will shed the RNA virus for up to three months, but that virus is not infectious. It is a, it is, the PCR test is so sensitive, it is picking up remnants of dead virus.
Right. And, and, and I do understand that generally speaking, those who are asymptomatic have a lower viral load and, and may be considered, let's say, less, maybe still infectious, but less infectious than those who are symptomatic. So I, I guess my question, my question really is, perhaps to, to Ms. Murphy, if, if we're saying that an asymptomatic student who tests positive is presumed to have been infectious two days prior to the test, does that comport, I mean, and, and that's a, that's a guideline we've been using for a while now, since school opened. So, but just as moments ago, we're hearing of a study that looked at blood collected nationally in December, and that's new information, there have been many studies on infectiousness since we started school. I'm looking at a Lancet report that's telling me that the, the mean for upper respiratory RNA shedding in asymptomatic, sorry, the mean, mean duration of upper respiratory tract RNA shedding is 17 days. So that, that's not the low end, it's not the high, that's just the mean. Why are, is it appropriate for us to be saying that we're presuming they were infectious two days prior to that positive test? Does that seem right? I guess that, that's a question I would direct to Ms. Murphy because we certainly, you know, a public health departments and school administrators and school committees can make decisions and make adjustments in their communities that they think are more appropriate based on new information. So I guess I would ask, and it's kind of a dumb question, help me, because I'm not a public health professional like you are, it doesn't, it doesn't sort of comport in my mind that we would presume that they were infectious two days prior to the test when we're getting more and more information that suggests they're shedding for much longer than that. And I think that, that gets back to that issue of the index case you didn't know about because they were asymptomatic and they got picked up through contact tracing. Does that make sense, Ms. Murphy?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. So, so to make that blanket statement is, is a little uncomfortable because there's not 100% certainty around, around what, what we have determined. I, I understand your point and I'm sure that DP, Mass DPH will alter their protocol as we, as we get more evidence and it becomes clearer that we need to change protocol. But right now, perhaps if we put a qualifier around that statement that simply states, you know, based on current protocol, it has been determined. So some type of qualifier to that might make people feel more comfortable or give a little more context to that, to that statement perhaps. But I, I know that DPH will not hesitate to change, just as they hasn't, haven't, didn't hesitate to change in the quarantine protocol that they, that they revised mid-November. And that was, that was based on data that people aren't developing the disease beyond, you know, beyond day 10. I mean, a very, very small. I mean, a very, very small percentage of people develop the disease who are, who are quarantined after day 10. So I know they will alter their course, you know, should the, should the evidence, should the evidence present that they should.
So I realize I'm just one member of the committee, I'm one voice in all of this, but, but some sort of qualifier-
Oops, I can't hear Ms. Nixon.
Not just for me, but I-
Ms. Bergstrom, can't hear you.
I'm sorry, can she hear me now? Is that better? So I'm just one member of this committee, I'm just one voice in this larger discussion. It would, I think there would be value in some sort of qualifier, not just to sort of satisfy like a personal reluctance on my part, but just because I, we're messaging this out to the community, so just in a way to be a little clearer about where that determination is coming from, I think would serve us well. Lastly, Mr. Chairman, I just want to put in a plug for Ms. Whitaker because I had the great misfortune of having to be in an urgent care walk-in clinic on Thanksgiving evening with my 10-year-old who was there for an injury, not a COVID test. And one by one, I started seeing Winchester High School students walk in with a parent with sullen expressions looking for PCR tests. And I thought to myself, oh, Ms. Whitaker has been on the phone today. I hope she had time to enjoy her Thanksgiving turkey. So thank you very much for everything that you continue to do to sort of tie all these loose ends together, and we really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I see there are a couple more questions. I do want to just reflect on a couple of the comments I've heard today. One which was, I guess I want to make my own comment more, more likely, is that I thank you and Public Health Department for providing us an area to operate. That is to telling us what is, what you think is safe and what you think is not safe. And I appreciate also what Mr., excuse me, Ms. Marshant said, that that just provides us an area to operate, and the area that we actually can operate is actually smaller than that because we have issues with staffing, we have issues with space, we have issues, a number of issues. So when, when we're asking you, is it safe is to have all the students come back? We're not, the question by its nature is simply with what we have right now, would you think it's safe? Not could we get Marshall, the staff, to be there, not could we get the students to come there? So I think it's important that this conversation is obviously your area of expertise. None of us are public health officials. I like to read journal articles as well as my colleague, but when I read them, I'm reading them as a layperson, as my colleague is as well. And I assume that you're reading the articles and you're analyzing them yourself. So I think it's important that we have these conversations. I certainly don't want to, absolutely do not want to silence Mr. Nixon reading an article and asking you these questions, but ultimately we turn to you to tell us what these articles say and what is safe to do. So I just think that, having heard that, I want to just make that comment. And I saw that Ms. Marshant had an additional question, so I'll turn back over to that. This is a great conversation. I certainly don't want to end this until everyone's had a chance to speak.
This was just a follow-up on the article discussion that Chris just brought out. I want to also reflect on the fact that these emails that Dr. Evans with the approval of Public Health puts out, they have, the trends after the fact have merited that statement that we haven't seen the transmission. All of the research and data is coming to fruition, exactly like you're saying, right, Ms. Murphy, like that when we say they weren't infectious and therefore there are no close contacts, the after effect is bearing exactly what was stated in those emails. We have never been, we have not been, sorry, the word, misstating anything and later on having to retract any statement made in those emails. In other words, they have been accurate as we've seen later on that there have no, have been no additional transmissions among the, the school classmates of those students.
Yes, thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there additional questions or comments? Ms. Bergstrom, I see your hand raised, it's very small, but I can see it.
So, thank you, Mr. Nixon. I, I have a similar concern as you to that qualifier in our letters and think I would like to see it reflect more of the message that you were sending regarding caution around our statement about how long they're infectious is, as they've been in school. Because I think the thing that we, we can't qualify and the limitation that Ms. Murphy indicated earlier, which is why maybe, may need to investigate more testing, as Ms. Murphy suggested, is that we don't know how many cases are asymptomatic or presymptomatic necessarily that are in our schools. What we haven't seen is any widespread symptomatic transmission that has involved, that has, that has become what has been known in the common media as a super-spreader event. So we, what we haven't seen is any large-scale group transmission, but we're certainly seeing community transmission. So if people are getting COVID somewhere, kids are getting COVID somewhere, and I think I heard both Ms. Whitaker and Ms. Murphy express maybe even a little bit of frustration with not being able to identify who index cases are all the time. They can identify close contacts, they can tell people to quarantine when they've been in contact, but truly tracing back who, as Mr. Nixon and I were talking about, the index case may be, may be a little more challenging. So I'm certainly, this is certainly not a reflection on public health. I certainly appreciate everything that they are able to do and that the incredible amount of work that contact tracing takes. But not knowing what our level of asymptomatic spread, both in Winchester and our schools is, could be a bit concerning as we move forward, especially as Ms. Murphy said, into December and January, which public health across the nation is telling us could be quite intense for COVID infection. So I guess I'm just trying to understand a little bit more about Ms. Murphy. Certainly, Mr. Vernalli and I have met with some local testing agencies, a local testing agency, and learned a little bit more about that. I guess when you're saying we need more testing, what kind of testing are you talking about? Because we know that there is surveillance testing, there is baseline screening and testing, which it seems like we're having in December, that seems more like a baseline screening. There are, there's PCR, there's rapid testing, there's many different options out there. Can you tell me where the Public Health Department is on their, means on those and how they modify the schools?
So I, yeah. So I would feel like if we're going to make an investment, it needs to be meaningful. And by that I mean surveillance testing of the school population, and we could even, we could even drill down further and create prioritization within the school population, meaning, you know, teachers and students, so we could get into that. But just speaking about the school community as a whole, I would love to see frequent, consistent testing, meaning, you know, weekly at minimum, I would think. And again, it's quite a large investment, but to me, that would be more meaningful. And, and not just, you know, sometimes they're doing, you know, one student per classroom every week, just, and a different student every week. To me, that's not a meaningful plan, right? You're not, you're not getting at enough data in a, in a, in a way that can be, can speak to the population as a whole within a school community. So, you know, again, I'm going to try to figure out which is the best way to go. Right now, I don't necessarily have a, an opinion about, you know, pool versus non-pool. Pool is certainly cheaper, and the quicker you can drill down within a pool about who the exact positive case is, the better, and who can deliver on that are questions I need answers to. And so I'm exploring all that. But certainly, certainly frequent and consistent testing of, of certain priority groups if we cannot do the whole, which I think the whole financially would be untenable, but we'll see.
And I realize that finances play a big role in that, and to be able to advocate for those finances, we would need to have some kind of a plan. When would you ideally, in an ideal world, how soon do you think we should have this kind of testing up and running to keep people safe through the winter? Ideally?
Ideally, yesterday.
You don't, if you don't have an answer to that now, you don't feel required to give us an answer on this. This is something that you maybe didn't come prepared to have an answer to, but certainly if you, you, you are prepared to, by all means.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't have concrete answers to any of this. I have, certainly have, you know, opinions on some of this, and I'm trying to, trying to move forward with, with those. But yeah, I can't give a concrete answer to that right now, but those conversations are ongoing. We also have a Board of Health meeting tonight. If anyone would like to continue this discussion at 5:00 PM, feel free.
Thank you very much, Ms. Murphy. I, I'd like to, if possible, move on. I see one additional question from Mr. Nixon.
Follow-up based on our answer.
I'd like to be able to move on to the rest of our agenda as it's 11:15, but Mr. Nixon, if we'll take that as a final question slash comment and then move on if possible?
So, thank you. So, Ms. Murphy, that last exchange with Ms. Bergstrom, to your point about wanting to be sure investments are meaningful, and I think you had said that there might even be certain sections of the school population that maybe warrant testing more than others. I'm not sure those were exactly your words, but if you couldn't test the whole student body, can, can you speak to what elements of the school population would either most benefit from or would you find most useful if we were able to find a way to do regular testing? Is it the younger kids that show less symptoms? Is it the older kids where we have more confirmed cases? Do you have thoughts about that?
Certainly, I would think, you know, there's a, there's a great, there's, we're getting, there's great pressure, I think, to keep kids in school, right? And, but I do think we need to do that, but also be protective of our fragile populations, meaning the teachers and also fragile students. So I would think that, you know, if we had to prioritize, teachers would certainly be at the top of the list. And then, you know, in terms of students, Kathy, you can feel free to chime in if you have an opinion. I don't think anyone's going to hold this, hold us to this right now because this could obviously change. I'm just one person, I report to a board as well, who may have certain opinions as well about this. But within the student population, it's tricky because on the one hand, you have the younger kids who experience less severe illness, they're asymptomatic, but we don't know the amount of transmission. I do feel like it would man, if we had that many asymptomatic people that we are all, all seem to be so worried about, I feel like it would manifest itself in other ways. I feel like we would see more households with other members becoming ill as, as a result of that. So, you know, but, and then in the older kids, you know, their behavior, while they experience less severe illness, you know, their behavior sort of warrants a little more monitoring. So I, this requires a bit more thought, actually. And I'm happy to have those conversations again at a later date.
I'd be curious if you talked to the board about that tonight, what kind of feedback you might get. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming this morning to our meeting, which turned out to be a lengthy, but a very interesting conversation. I think it's helpful. If you were willing to, could you give a plug to the Stop the Spread sites that we have? Because while we have those two sites coming up in Winchester, the Stop the Spread sites, which are free for all Massachusetts residents, I believe, having partaking of one of them, relatively quick, relatively easy, depending on the day. I don't know if you can give a plug to some of them, whatever is, your experience or indirectly with those sites and how they've worked, anything quickly?
Yeah, so if you Google Stop the Spread, you'll get a full listing of all the towns that host sites, and some towns and cities host multiple sites. For example, I've been to Lawrence five times myself, and I've been to the walk-up there, I've been to the drive-through there. Drive-throughs typically, not just in Lawrence, but in any community, typically have a longer wait time. But it's the convenience of sitting in your car and you're not, you know, around other, other people, and it's, as it's getting colder, that may be more convenient. However, you know, the walk-ups are very easy, they're well-spaced, they're safe, everyone wears a mask, there tend to be less, less people in line at those, I find personally. Again, they're free, they require very minimal information. Oftentimes, you can sign up on your phone in advance as you're waiting there, which is very convenient because it quickens, you know, your processing once you get to the front of the line. Many people I know have gone to the Lynn Drive-Thru, to the Everett Drive-Thru, and I've all spoken very highly of it and found it a very efficient process. Pre-Thanksgiving, post-Thanksgiving, the wait time and the demand was enormous. And it, I've heard it is still very, there are very lengthy lines in the drive-throughs. That's why I encourage people, do a walk-up if you can, you might save yourself some time.
Thank you very much. And I think that's just important that people realize that if one of those two dates or the one for Winchester residents is full, there are numerous opportunities to get tested. Again, I did a drive-through, I didn't say this, I did a drive-through in Everett. It was, it was right pre-Thanksgiving, and it was a lengthy wait, but I sat in my car and listened to the music, and it was about as easy as it can really get. So I just want to make sure that people are aware that we have that opportunity, it's free, and it's free, I believe, at least currently through mid-January, and I don't know, hopefully they will extend that, but, but for now, it's free through mid-January.
I was also going to just give a plug to Stop the Spread because I've been to Stop the Spread at least four times in the last month with my kids. Everybody is negative. But it has been, the three of the times, it was probably an average of 20 to 20 to 45 minutes, and then the last time right before Thanksgiving, that was, that was a wait. These were all the walk-up sites, but yes, it was pre-registration online, and then once you had done that once, then every, then you did not have to register again. And it was very straightforward.
So thank you very much for coming today. I know you have busy days, I appreciate it. And have a nice day. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item. I know we spent a long time on that first item, but I think it was a very important discussion to have, so thank you for indulging me. Moving forward to the next agenda item, which is a action item, vote to accept Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence grant. If you could elevate Ms. Connolly, who should, hopefully is still on, I told her we'd be, she'd be toward the front of the agenda, but I didn't-
She is not.
Let me see.
Yes, she is. Info at WIPPI.
She is?
Oh.
Oh, info, okay. Thank you.
And so Ms. Connolly is here, she's the Executive Director of Winchester Foundation for Educational Excellence, and she's presenting WIFI Academy Grant in the amount of $30,000. I'm invited here, here, because I would love to hear more about it. Very excited, our partnership with WIFI has gone back many, many, many years. As we alluded at our town meeting presentation, we would not have been able to go remote without help from WIFI to get us up and running with all of our devices and technology, the big powered-up grant they provided us with several years ago. So we're very appreciative. WIFI came to us asking how they could help, and this is an area that I think is, would be very helpful. And so I appreciate you coming here and telling us a little bit more about the grant that you have offering us. And Ms. Connolly, I think I saw, yes, you are there, yes. Ms. Connolly, welcome.
Thank you very much. And I was there all along, I just don't, I keep forgetting to change it from info at WIPPI to Karen Connolly. So yes, the grant that we're presenting today, we're calling the WFEE Academy Grant. It's a pilot project. It's $30,000, and it has been the subject of a great field of discussion, both within, excuse me, our Grants Committee and the Board as a whole. What we heard from parents, and we also heard from educators, was despite all of the attempts to the district, of the district to provide full programming for students when they were remote, and remote programming for students that are completely remote, there were times when some students were not finding that there were things to do. The schedule, as you all know even better than I do, is impossibly complicated, and it has taken us, you know, literally months to come up with some sort of a shell that potentially would allow all elementary students to participate. So what we have come up with is a plan for a two-week pilot that will impact K through 5 and has eight providers, and each student will then have the opportunity, because of the number of classes we have set up, to participate in up to eight experiences throughout those two weeks. You know, and I could go on and on about the details, but I think frankly, that's not as important as the- as the concept of what we're trying to do is fill some need within the community. And we agree from the beginning that it is, like everything else in this year, not perfect. We believe strongly that people have given us money in the past and continue to make donations because they want us to attempt to help the school district deal with issues. There are a number of issues that this grant does not touch. There are a number of things that are not WIFI's to decide. It is WFE's role to support what the district proposes. You know, and, and we did talk a great deal about, should we be providing what you would call more strict academic content? And that, like everything, got very complicated. What would that be? How would it be fair and equitable for all students to access it? What we are providing is arts-based programming that we don't think is something that should be considered fluff or just the arts. Because as people who work in the arts know, the arts provide a number of things to people who participate, not the least of which is the social emotional support that we hear from educators and parents that our students need. So we're going to set this up as an online portal. After vacation, people will be able to go on, starting January 1st, sign up their students and it will run for two weeks, at the end of which we will do a survey. And we will also be checking metrics of how many students actually sign up. Do they stay through the whole class? You know, this is, it's a significant amount of money. If there is a real welcoming in the district of this, then we certainly want to consider continuing. If it becomes clear that it's not meeting needs, then with only two weeks invested, we can back away from it. I would like to address, and I'm sure some of you have questions, and I'm happy to take those. I also know you have a long agenda. But I would like to address very specifically the comments made by a parent at the beginning of this call. And I appreciate the kind word she said about WIFI. I want to assure her and any of our other donors that we take this very seriously. And we considered this grant through our grants committee that is composed of teachers, teachers who don't teach in this district, but most of whom live in this district but teach elsewhere, from parents and from folks on our board. We vetted it through our board numerous times. We discussed the fact that one of the providers will be Brian Malaskas, who is an arts educator who runs KidStock here in Winchester. And he has for many years provided programming for Winchester public schools. Brian felt strongly enough about this grant that he offered to pull KidStock from the roster of performers we were considering. He also offered to resign from WIFI's board, neither of which was our board interested in accepting. Because I think that in trying to provide meaningful programming through Zoom, you need to work with people that know what they're doing. Brian at KidStock has been providing such programming since March. Studio on the Common, which is another locally owned business, is one who we will be working with. They also have been providing the programming. So we felt like it was not in our best interest to take a look at somebody who knew what they were doing, but then exclude them from the grant. Because we want this grant to succeed. We want it to bring our students a sense of joy, a sense of purpose, potentially introduce them to things that they have not been aware of before. Some of the offerings are as varied as learning about white sharks from the White Shark Conservancy based on the Cape to programming that Studio on the Common is going to put on. So with those thoughts, I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. Again, I know you have a lot to get through on your agenda.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connolly. Before I take questions, I'd actually like to just kick it over to Dr. Ellen Emma to, because I know you've worked with her about this and many other issues. Just see if she has anything she'd like to add about this grant proposal.
Thanks, Brian. You're still difficult to hear.
I'm sorry.
But I think you were asking me to share something.
Yes, please.
If I had anything to share about this.
Yes, please.
Great. So yeah, I just want to reiterate again, a big thank you to WIFI and obviously everything that they do. But I think it is really meaningful that there are opportunities that students will really be engaged in and excited about. And as much as we want to believe everything we always do is super exciting to them, sometimes, you know, having something different and being able to go into areas that are their passions are what really hooks them in. And there's lots of research that shows when students do things in the arts and when they do things that are these exploratory pieces, it does strengthen their academic skills as well. As all of those typically have, you know, the reading and the writing and the discussion and all of those pieces and activating different parts of their brain really supports their academic piece as well. So we just want to say a big thank you and certainly feel that this supports our mission.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ellen Emma. And I apologize you couldn't hear me well. I called on you out of the blue there, sorry. Ms. Marshant, you had a question or comment?
Yes, I would like to comment about WIFI and the integrity and hard work that the executive director, the board, all of the donors bring to our community, how enriching it is. Without WIFI, some of the extras that make Winchester special wouldn't be possible. And so I really want to give them a huge shout out and I hope that the donors continue to support them because of all the work. Mostly, I want to thank Karen and the board for really listening to our staff on what we are working toward and really taking to heart our goals, our district goals, our staff goals, and understanding that it's not always about the, the curriculum around math and science, that our staff is doing that work and our children are learning. But it's also about their social emotional health. It's also about engagement. It's also about their interests, passions. And so I feel like this grant really reflects the wonderful relationship we have between the public schools and the non, this nonprofit private group. And so I really want to thank Karen for that work and I look forward to hearing more about what data is gathered and how we're meeting the needs of students through this wonderful innovative programming. And I'm very happy that it involves so many local businesses because in the end, it's a system that feeds itself. If our businesses are, are able to, to benefit and our students are able to benefit, it's just a very positive circle. So I thank WIFI. I thank Karen for her incredibly hard work and so that's my.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marshant. Comment from Mr. Nixon or question?
I, I have some questions actually for you, Karen, and I, I appreciate what, what WIFI is proposing and trying to do in it. I, I'm generally very supportive of it, but I, I would ask for some help in kind of breaking down some of the numbers. When we say 240 experiences and eight providers, are providers essentially businesses or content providers? So in other words, KidStock is one of eight providers. Studio on the Common is one of eight providers. There are six other providers that are just not visible to us in the information that we've received. Is that right? And do, do you know who those other six are or are those to be determined?
That is correct. But I'm going to turn off my video for a minute because I see my camera is doing really fancy things and I'm going to plug it back in and we'll see if it works. To answer your question, the way that this is working out is that each class is provided multiple times, which is how others, which is how all the students can access it. So yes, those are two of the providers. The other, one of the others is the Shark Conservancy on the Cape. We're still signing contracts with additional providers. I know one that Brian has talked to and is interested in is a group called Drumatics. I think it might be pronounced Dramatics, but it's a drumming group that encourages students to participate in the classes to be physically active and involved in them. So as we, you know, as we get more providers signed up, we will put that all online so parents can see who they are.
Okay. And then since I, I like to think I'm a math guy, so I see 240 experiences and eight providers. If I divide 240 by eight, I get 30. Is an experience a class? Does that mean, for instance, that KidStock would be providing 30 classes total? And that those classes are going to happen at different times, right, to accommodate different students? So if, if a BB cohort student who's in school on Thursday and Friday would be eligible for this on a Monday, Tuesday, is this pilot providing that class, does that BB cohort student, are they signing up for a class on a Monday or a Tuesday? Or is the, is it a two-day class?
No. All great questions. Very difficult to explain in one short release. Each class is meant to stand on its own. And so a student would, a BB cohort stu, student would sign up for perhaps a Monday class and the times that we kicked are times that we worked with the elementary principals that the students weren't already scheduled to be participating in one of their other activities. So let's just say we're talking about first graders. We looked at the schools to make sure that when we, when we organize a class that would be of interest to a first grader, it wouldn't be during art, music, or physical education. Students who are fully remote are going to be able to take advantage of any of the classes that fit into the time period that they are not scheduled.
Okay, got it.
Because it's that much more complicated to account for those folks.
Okay. And since each individual class, because I, I, you acknowledged this in your presentation, it's, it's limited in terms of space. But if each class is kept to 25 participants, do we assume that those eight providers are running classes on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday?
We lost Chris.
I don't think they could hear you, Mr. Nixon.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So my, sorry, my question was, do we assume that the eight providers are all providing those eight classes, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday? And if my math's right, then that would be 25 participants, 25 students on any of those four days, but times eight. So that's really 200 spots that are sort of available for students through this grant. Does that make sense? Is that about right?
About right. That 25 number isn't the absolute because some of these providers are able to provide classes that can accept more students. Some of them, for instance, some of the Studio on the Common classes that she has been doing for private businesses, businesses that have hired her to do classes for the children of their employees, some of her classes are more specific, are more strictly apportioned. So if she says 26 kids, that's 26. Some of these things, some of the folks that we're reaching out to feel like they can accommodate a greater number of kids.
Okay.
So I know you're a math guy, but when you keep doing the math, you're not going to come up with the exact perfect number. But that's the, that's the swing in the math.
And, and so I'm asking really because I really appreciate, so the genesis behind this, to your point, a lot of kids are zoomed out. So trying to figure out how do you kind of maximize the bang for the buck? Are you going to be, will, will students have the opportunity to take just one class? Is that the idea? So that, so that you don't have kids sort of take multiple spots? That's my first question. And then I'll ask the second one and then I'll shut up. We, we certainly heard at several school committee meetings, concern from parents of our remote elementary students in particular about them being zoomed out. Are you, has there been any thought towards sort of prioritizing or are you reserving a certain number of spots for kids who are fully remote? I'm, I'm not saying you should do that, but that's sort of an open question. Is that an appropriate thing to consider given that our hybrid kids have that kind of direct teacher content two days a week or contact? So that's just an open question. Thank you.
So part of the, part of the really complicated aspect of this grant is that we really don't know how many students are going to sign up. And to a point that was made earlier about, well, why didn't we survey the parents about what they wanted? We discussed that at great length, but I think what we heard from both parents on our board and what I see from experiences in the community is parents are so overwhelmed right now. Answering one more email about a survey, what would your kid want to do in two and a half months, seemed to us to be unlikely that people would answer. Or if they answered that what they're feeling in October or November may be very different than what they're feeling in January. And so that's why we didn't do a survey at the beginning of this. We don't feel like we have to reserve particular spots for particular groups of students because we don't necessarily know how it's going to unfold. And we're hoping that organically, this is going to sort itself out. We're certainly going to monitor the signups to make sure that we don't same-ten students taking all of the classes. Because the classes are being offered multiple times. So the same class. So one of the classes I know that Brian is, is looking at is one that was called Read, React, and Resolve, which is a literacy workshop designed to teach creative problem solving. So it's going to be offered multiple times. So if you as a student can't sign up on the Monday time, you may have more than one time on Monday and then you may have time on Tuesday to get in. That's also another good reason why this is a two-week pilot. Because if it seems like it's very popular, but we see that there are problems with, you know, with one thing selling out, as it were, then we can tweak it. So I think it will be very much tweaked as it goes along. You know, I mean, one of the things that WIFI always has meant our funding to be was funding for innovative things, funding for stuff that the school committee, the school department couldn't afford to do and maybe also couldn't afford to monitor. We're probably, you know, I think it's pretty clear what I'm going to be doing in January and into February. We're going to monitor it and try, try to tweak it on a real-time basis. We have also with our contracts with providers allowed as to how if a class doesn't receive signups, that we have agreed on a cancellation fee with them, but we won't have to pay them the full provider fee. Also as a way to ensure that we're not spending money on things that, that aren't being used.
Thank you very much, Ms. Connolly. Ms. Bergstrom, I think I see your hand raised.
I, I'll, I'll promise I'll be really quick, Mr. Vanelia. I just wanted to thank Karen and her board and to follow up on what you just said, Ms. Connolly. The WIFI has always been the opportunity for the district to try innovative things. I think one of the things the hybrid model and the remote model don't allow us to do this year is to take field trips and to have those experiences that are sort of related to what we're doing in the classroom, but outside our classroom experience that makes school special. And while we all love to be able to do those, have those experiences in person, I think that you've come up with something that can be sort of the next best thing for us this year. And to be able to give our students experiences that are related to their school experiences, but virtually. I'd also like to applaud you for something that you mentioned earlier, which was looking for providers that had experience with remote learning. Because I feel that sometimes people have negative experiences with remote learning. Having been the beneficiary in this family of some of the extraordinary programming through KidStock virtually, I have to say that from March until June, we spent a lot of time while they were developing some of their programs and found many of them to be incredibly engaging to our elementary school student at home in a way that school can't be. Because there are things that you can do with drama and, and learning that way virtually that are different than school. So I applaud you for looking for providers that have actually been working with this and experienced with this. And I hope that parents and kids give it a try. And I, I actually worry more about filling all your spots and having people wanting more than not having enough people to take them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. That would be a good problem to have, in fact, in the end, as opposed to the other way around. Ms. Bollinger?
I was just going to say as well that I'm grateful for WIFI's support now especially, and then also throughout many, many years. And for the opportunities that WIFI has brought to our students on remote days. And I really appreciate the creative programming that you're offering to keep our students engaged. And I appreciate those sparks of joy that you had mentioned. And especially the interactive nature of the programs that you're offering. Because I think that one of the things that is, that our students really appreciate is every possible moment that they can get where they can interact. So thank you for the interactive programming and the creativity.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I call a vote, I would just like to point out that I'm quite sad that this is not a program for adults because some of the things you're discussing, I think I would enjoy very much. So thank you very much. I would happily. I would happily accept a vote to accept the grant.
I'm happy to make a motion that we accept with great appreciation the WIFI grant in the amount of $30,000 for the Pilot WIFI Academy project as presented today.
Second.
Second.
We had, everybody seconded it. I would, pardon?
Do we do roll call?
We are required to do a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Boliniers?
Aye.
Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, vote is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Can we make a request to maybe hear back somehow in February, how this is going, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely. Ms. Connolly, we would love to have you back during or when this is rolled out to hear how it's going. And I know that you'll be in contact with Dr. Ellen Emma, so we'll hear from her as well. But I'm certainly excited to hear any updates you have, because I think this is a very innovative and very exciting grant. And we certainly want to hear about it. It's good to hear about some good news from time to time.
Absolutely. And thank you for all of your kind words today. One last piece of good news before I let you go back. WIFI is doing Author Fest remotely, as opposed to a one-day experience when we bring 18 to 20 authors and illustrators into town. It will be over four Wednesdays in January at all of the schools in four different time periods with 19 presenters. And as I have said to the principals and the library media specialists and all of our presenters, what could possibly go wrong with that schedule? But look forward to Author Fest. It'll be very different, but I hope it will be engaging. And I hope it will achieve the same goal that it always has, which is promoting literacy for our students and also providing some joy. So thank you so much, and I will continue watching quietly from my office.
Thank you.
Can I just shout out and wish Ms. Connolly a happy birthday? The bird told me.
You stole it from me. I was about.
She gave her two hours of her birthday to come and sit with us. So as always, we greatly appreciate your efforts and hope the rest of your day is really terrific.
Well, thank you very much. I am taking the position that since this is a year we all want to forget, we're going to forget this birthday, which is going to make me a year younger. But I still appreciate you calling it out. Thank you.
Happy birthday. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday.
So with that, we will move on to the next item in our agenda, which is, if I'm reading correctly, provide a committee with update on COVID-19 district response. Dr. Evans, I see you're at Hogwarts Station. Turn it over to you.
And my train's coming any minute, so I'm going to try to be brief. I would like to just share a few things that are happening in relation to our response to COVID, our planning for more in-person learning sometime, we hope, beginning in January. The, we are grateful to the town for conducting this pre-testing for our employees and for our wider community. And hope that that is the start of more expansive testing, should we be able to find a funding source for that. In the meantime, the school district is participating in the binax now rapid testing program sponsored by the state with about 140 other school districts. Our nurses have been working hard. If you might imagine, it's a complicated protocol that requires the involvement of the school physician, some certification that we have to get through the state, additional training for the nurses, et cetera. I'll be providing more information on that. It will have somewhat limited usefulness, because it's only to be used for symptomatic individuals, and we're hoping that nobody comes to school symptomatic. And so there are a lot of logistics still to work through, but we are working through those. Our COVID-19 district planning and implementation team and the building-based teams have been looking at options for bringing students back more fully in person. And despite our slow pace of planning in this regard, it's of necessity due to lots of complex factors, including the main fact that nothing has changed since the school committee initially voted on our plan for school reopening. The guidance on what determines a close contact, the space availability or budget, none of that has made it easy or quick for us to transition to more in-person learning. However, we're open to a variety of methods, and the teams are looking at that. And we should sometime in December have more information on some options for you, or early January. As you might imagine, one of the things that we're really reluctant to do is to put any undue additional pressure on our contact tracing or increase school spread by inadvertently changing some of the components of our back-to-school plan that we think have really helped with our mitigation efforts and very much limited school spread. Many of the cases who have become positive were not in school while positive because they're in a cohort that's at home. The price that our students pay for that safety is that they don't get as much in-person time. We recognize that. We want more in-person time. But any of the models that we're looking for and changing in January come with either less at-home support through some of the at-home sessions that happen on the at-home days, or mixing of cohorts, or eliminating the Wednesday kind of break-in buffer in between the two cohorts that we've found to be incredibly helpful to us. And so there'll be some important value decisions that school committee will have to make in response to any proposals to bring students back more fully in person. So working on those, but it has, it is a complex algorithm. The thing I think that the governor and the commissioner, to some extent, are urging how students come back more fully in person, the thing that they don't understand or don't acknowledge is the impact on adults. And while we've had to quarantine very few cohorts of students with classrooms of students, we have many adults in our district who are required to quarantine for a variety of reasons. Some generated by exposure to students who are positive or other staff members who are positive, but more generally quarantine based on their own family exposure or other school exposure. And our capacity to provide qualified, certified substitute teachers or adequate support for students or when their teachers or other staff members are quarantining really places and that's pressure on our district. And as I've said repeatedly, it's not going to be a single metric that's going to require us to close a school. It's generally going to be because of two factors. One, that you determine that there's school spread or there's widespread community spread that has limited our ability to contact trace and shut it down. Or two, that we simply have too many adults who are absent, and we can't safely live in schools. And so it's not a matter of will, and it's not a matter of prioritization or thinking outside the box. It's simply a very complex problem to tackle. And anytime you change any of the components, you run the risk of having an unintended consequence, which is accelerating school or community spread. So we are working on that. The, the other thing I think I'd love to really stress for you is how much I want to reinforce Jim Murphy's plea that we all use good judgment in terms of not letting our guard down when interacting with others, particularly being in enclosed spaces with people. Most of the cases we've had in our district have been students who have contracted it from friends or family members outside of school. And no one wants anyone to get ill. Nobody did this intentionally. And it's not a blame or shame issue that might lead people to not share information about their positivity. But it is something that we just need to hold ourselves accountable for if we're going to get through this winter and keep our schools open. Every positive case results in many, many hours of contact tracing, not only in the part of the public help personnel, but also principals and other administrators, our nurses, who have to follow up with all of the close contacts, look at seating charts, ensure that we've identified all the appropriate people, and then make provisions if we have to have a classroom go remote, or make provisions for the testing, which I was fortunate enough to supervise the rapid testing at Carpers, because we had plenty of room in our parking lot to line up cars, and I could use my office for the mobile testers. But all of these things are incredibly disruptive to our schools and our personnel. And all of our nurses, and the public help nurses, I know are working every single day and night, and on the weekends, and on the holidays, as are our principals, because we've had positive cases nearly every day, or are investigating reports of positive cases nearly every day since school has opened and before. And so I can't say enough about the Public Health Department and their efforts. They are relying on data, they are going through, and they have kept our schools open through their efforts. And so just want to make sure they get a big shout out in that front. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. I think we have covered in past meetings and then earlier today, trends around positivity. And because our COVID-19 teams are working on a number of options, all of those have to be negotiated with our four union groups. And so that's why we're not sharing them online at this point, until we know what's feasible and practical and reasonable. But at some point, we will all be back together in classrooms once again. I am hopeful it is sometime early in the new year. And planning our budget for the next fiscal year, starting the fall in September, to be fully back in in-person. Very hopeful about the vaccine and hopeful about our ability to earn the spread, even if we're masked, and hopefully we'll be able to be back in person for the start of our next school year. And so I appreciate everyone's patience as we kind of work through what the options might be. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Evans. I would look around the table and see if there are any questions. I see a hand raised here, Mr. Nixon.
So, Dr. Evans, thank you. I, I'm going a little bit to the boundary here of definition for COVID-19 response. But since we have a lot of remote students because of COVID-19 and developed a plan for them, can you just speak to what's your understanding from Ms. Capodanno, who's our remote sort of elementary lead? How's that going? What kind of adjustments are we making? Have we made some improvements? What kind of feedback are you getting from her and from parents? Can you just share with us kind of your sense of that today?
Sure. And I'd invite Lori Kirby to jump in if she's still on, unless I see her, because she has been working very clearly as supportive of Chrissy, as well as Jen Ellen Emma has. So I've heard very little from our full-remote community, which is a good thing, because I generally hear from people who are unhappy. But since we made the schedule amendments, we, and we put together a parent advisory group, and we're having a more direct, one-person line of communication. I think in general, full-remote families are fairly happy with how things are going. Obviously, we'd all like more student-teacher contact, but at the same time, trying to limit screen time is always a tough balancing act. And we'd have to also give a shout out to the elementary principals. They're providing a lot of supports as well to full-remote families. And have made a definite attempt to include them in all school meetings, so that students still feel a connection. And we're planning for our fifth grade celebrations at the end of the year. And so I don't, I think of the students as all of our students, and I don't tend to think of them in two groups, hybrid and full-remote. But I understand that the complexity of managing this has necessitated additional resources. And so we were happy to have Ms. Capodanno step in this role. Lori, or Jen, is there anything else about full-remote that you want to share that's important?
I think the sense of community that has been built within the remote and also with their home schools, with the community meetings, has made a difference. I think having the one contact person, not only for teachers, but also for families, has made a tremendous difference. And again, just the communication that Chrissy has been able to put out in, you know, coordination with the building principals has been invaluable. And her experience working with new staff and coaching and knowing who the resources are, so that we can best support our new staff that are taking on these very complex roles, has made a difference. And we thank the parents for their patience and support as we work through many of the issues, you know, that came our way. But we're now looking to the remote teachers to help those that are teaching in the hybrid model think about what snow days may look like and what full-remote days may look like, so that we are consistent in our practices and people are not feeling overwhelmed. So each day, we get better, we communicate more, and having that point person has been.
Can I just give a quick shout out? I think Lori touched at the end, but shout out to the full-remote teachers. You talked about Chrissy and the administrators, but I don't believe that all the full-remote teachers are teachers that went into the school year thinking this was the way they were going to teach. And to be able to pivot, both from, you know, the lower grades all the way up through the high school, to be able to pivot and transition to this way of teaching and create classrooms that are as close to being in-person as you could possibly be. And they mimic the in-person instruction is an incredible feat. And they, I think, have taken it on with grace and ingenuity. So I think that they need a shout out here as well, because what they're doing, the hybrid teachers are teaching other heroic ways, but they are teaching kids in front of them. And the remote teachers just have a different, a different challenge, so.
Right, yeah. Your point is so very well taken. And I think that, again, having that time on Wednesdays is making a tremendous amount of difference, because they're able to talk about what's going well and what they're working on and what they could use support with. And to your point about the instruction, again, I think we're learning a lot from our remote teachers, and it is serving the hybrid as well. We talk about that real-world, authentic experience. And truly, when we're in that remote world, we're really tapping into that. And again, applaud all the teachers for their efforts, because it hasn't been easy. And as you said, many went from the role of, let's say, a reading specialist, and, you know, two weeks prior, learned that they would be teaching grade two. So, you know, they took it on, as you said, with grace and style. And it's been, it's been fun to watch.
Thank you, Ms. Kirby. Mr. Nixon had a follow-up question.
Thank you very much. My second last question, how is our, perhaps from Ms. Whittemore, how is our COVID-modified transportation plan working out with North suburban transportation? We have smooth sailing with busing? Or, Dr. Evans?
Ellen, if you can, you can take that if you're ready. I'm sorry, I could not hear Mr. Nixon.
I was just asking, how's our, how's our modified?
I can translate it for you, Chris. So, yeah, you are, you are all very low. I keep adjusting my volume up to like 85, so that's probably why.
Sorry about that.
If you continue adjusting your option, if that option, they're probably not hearing you. Who wants to know how transportation's going in terms of the modified transportation?
Going well. We are seeing, we are getting inquiries a couple times a week on whether or not transportation will continue to be available for parents to make the decision. As we get into the winter months, we do have capacity. And we've been, so far, everything has been going well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whittemore. Mr. Nixon, are there additional questions? By the way, I would say that both of those questions were well within the confines of this agenda topic, so I don't, I don't think it was on the edge, so. Are there additional questions? Ms. Marchand?
This is probably for Ms. Kirby. Are we supporting our new teachers who are teaching full-remote? Are they getting the mentorship that is typical in a, in a normal year?
Yeah, that's a great question. Yes, so if they're here full year, they're very much part of our program, because many of the full-year LOAs are brand new.
Yeah.
So in order for, to them to move on from their initial to the professional license, they need to be part of a mentor program. And most importantly for us, we want to make sure they have what they need, so that they're best for the students. And for those that And for those that are here just a short amount of time, it might be the twelve-week, and then they're off to another role. We have them, you know, working with mentors, and that program looks very different. They're not doing the full program, but they definitely have a colleague that's supporting them along the way. I will say that, again, Chrissy being there is able to see, be in classrooms, be there on Wednesdays to hear where we are and what we need. And those curriculum coordinators at the elementary level have been nothing but extraordinary. So, all the Julie McElhenney Formans, Katie Malone, Betty Bochamp, and Catherine Quire have been working very, very closely, not only with the remote teachers, but also the new teachers in the hybrid model.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional questions or comments on this agenda topic, Ms. Bergstrom?
Dr. Evans, I wanted to go back to what, there was a public comment question about it, and you touched on it briefly. And I'm just wondering if we can sort of clarify any further. We've talked a number of times about schedule changes. We've talked about them starting in January. I'd like you to have an opportunity to also respond to the public comment that said, you know, somebody got a personal email indicating something different. And, but I kind of feel like from the districts, the message hasn't really changed. That we, and let me see if I can encapsulate it, and then you let me know if I've got it, and so that we're clear for the community. That currently, right now, K-12, we're examining our practice from the fall. We're examining our schedules. We're taking feedback from teachers, the educators, about what's working and not working for them. Just like we would actually in any school year to make adjustments and make sure we're offering sort of the best programming and the best curriculum delivery that we can, even as we go through the school year. So that that may result in some schedule or delivery changes for the second semester, which starts at the mid-end of January. So, but all of that is still going to be driven, even as we drive towards that goal. We are also still keeping an eye on the COVID case counts in our own community, in the Massachusetts community. We're still, we're under guidance both about what Governor Baker says about schools, but also about just community spread in our own state as well. So, we're sort of having to drive towards a goal while at the same time being flexible and nimble based on still an unknown disease progression in the state. So, I, I would guess that any message that we're sending is that we're using all of the data that we have to make decisions that may or may not happen by the end of January, depending on all of those variables. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's accurate. Any reference that I make to school or grade level shutdown has to do with public health considerations and staffing levels. And that's something that's out of our control in terms of whether our schools will be able to remain fully open. And if, and if and when we change the model, how, how well that will work. And there are still a lot of unknowns on the public health front. But what I would say, in addition to that, I am in three different superintendent groups. And we tackle this collaboratively. Every other district is wrestling with the same questions we're wrestling with and trying to respond to both the request for more in-person time from some families and the governor and the commissioners' request that we open up schools more fully. And if it were easy, then many more schools would have done it. And if it were safe, many more schools would have done it. And it's proving to be as complex as we expected it would be, and even more so due to staffing and leaves and medical needs and the need for some staff members to work fully remote. And concerns about making sure that we appropriately address HVAC issues, et cetera. And so, there are a lot of complex factors that go into any recommendation. Right now, we're hoping that we can make some small steps in January at the end of the semester. But again, as you say, it is dependent on the, what we learn about the science and where we are as a community and as a state at that point. And so, we are open to feedback. But there are some practical considerations that just are non-negotiable. And so, we have to work within some constraints. But we're working hard at it. And we'll see when we present some options to school committee that there are no perfect options. As someone said earlier in this meeting, this is an atypical year in a pandemic. We're doing the best we can. We recognize it's not good enough. But in the meantime, I see a lot of joy in our classrooms. And I see both full remote and hybrid students learning well. And I see teachers and other support staff members and administrators just working incredibly hard to make this as positive an experience as possible. So while we've spent, you know, three, two and a half hours already, very focused on things that are negative about this pandemic, there's so many positives and so many silver linings that continue to give us joy and make us optimistic that we'll get through this and our students will come strong.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. A question, questions, or do you have a follow-up, Ms. Bergstrom?
I just had a quick follow-up. So, is there a timeline? First, my first question is, is there a timeline that you have or that you expect to have for when you'll be presenting those options to school committee that you just mentioned? And my, actually, my other question I'll hold for a bit.
Yeah, so I hope to have some information to you in the middle of December for some small steps towards bringing some students back more fully. But it's likely going to be early January before we bring a more complete plan, especially for grade six and twelve.
Thank you, that's really good to know, so that people, particularly in the community also know what to expect. Because I think sometimes when they hear a plan is coming, they think it's tomorrow. So, it's good, it's good to have a timeline on that, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Additional questions or comments on this agenda topic? Seeing none. Dr. Evans, thank you for your update here. I know you're going to give us an update on winter sports, so that will sort of dovetail with this in a moment. But between now and, between there, we will move to our next agenda item, which is student mental health report. Mr. Levine, I believe you all have in your packet the, the summary data from some of the surveys that you have conducted. And I'd like to welcome you to the table. And you can, you should have the ability to share data if you want to.
Thank you, Brian. Yes, I'm going to share my screen. Same summary that I shared with you all. So, to be clear, there were, there were two surveys that, that were put out back at the, towards the end of October. We, for pre-K through five, surveyed the parents about their children's experience. And then, in grade six through twelve, we surveyed, surveyed our students. And given that this was our, our first, first time doing this, coming back, we'll recognize that there are certainly areas to grow in this and areas to increase respondents in the future. But this was our first, our first survey to this nature. For our pre-K through, pre-K through five respondents, we had three hundred and twenty parents respond to, to the survey. Sorry. Three hundred and twenty parents responded to the survey. And that was pretty consistent throughout all five, all five elementary schools the students are from. And also, pretty, pretty even along the grades in one through five. Obviously, you can see that there's a little bit of a, of a dip from the kindergarten respondents, keeping in mind that those students were in pre-K last year when the pandemic hit. I also broke it down into cohorts of respondent. You can see for elementary, we had about equal respondents for the AA and BD cohort. We had nine respondents for the full day and fifty-one full remote respondents. When we asked a question to parents about how much stress their child is experiencing with the transition to the school year, to the new school year, I think the response was actually, was actually very positive. The, overall, the averages speak to a pretty low amount of stress for, for our students from what our parents are seeing. Now, obviously, there are individual cases that, that parents do report more stress. But on the whole, I think these numbers reflect very positive things about our student mental health. As we continue to look at our students' connection to counseling, counseling supports within, within our elementary schools, we keep in mind that the, the only counseling supports that we have are our school psychologists at the elementary level, as well as our social emotional learning coaches. That we have, we have two and a half of currently throughout the five elementary schools. The, about ten, ten to fifteen percent of the parents responded that their students do have a connection with, with a counselor. And about eighty to eighty-five percent said that their, their child does not currently have a connection with a counselor. And also, within that, there was certainly some respondents of, no, I, I don't need, I, we're not connected because we don't need it, or no, we're not connected, but we have outside resources. Or no, we're not connected, but also would like to be connected. And so, that's where we certainly made sure that we had all of our counselors throughout the district responding to the families that had voiced they want to connect with a, with a school counselor immediately. So, that was, that was attached to our counselors pretty shortly after the results came in. That was one of our first priorities.
Can I ask Jason to just clarify? Can Jason clarify the note? Can you just scroll up for a moment? For those that responded yes, you have a note that says different than fifty responses?
Correct.
Can you, can you explain what that means?
Ten to fifteen percent or eighty to eighty-five percent. There was, there was. It was broken down into two different questions. The question first was, does their student have a connection with a school-based counselor? Of which there was thirty-two responses of yes. And then the follow-up question was to identify that counselor so that the, so that the counselors, as we broke it down, could understand where there already was a connection. And we had fifty responses that indicated a specific counselor. So, that's where that difference is.
So, does that suggest to you then that there's something kind of screwy with the responses here? I mean, if, if thirty-two said yes, but then later fifty said they had a connection, maybe they misunderstood the question. Is that, is it thirty-two plus fifty, or some of the fifty and the thirty-two is just a little bit gray, right?
Yeah, no, it, it, there, there is some grayness there. It is not thirty-two plus fifty. My, from what I see, from what I see, it's really the difference between thirty-two and fifty, so eighteen. But I, I will take a look at that as we develop further surveys in the future.
Thank you.
And then we, we asked, and this comes from our work, our, our work with Ruler, in that we find so often that our children have very limited vocabulary, and not just our children in Winchester, but our children overall really have a limited emotional vocabulary to describe their emotions typically. We describe our emotions in one of, one of four or five words. And so, we, we asked this question really to get a sense of, how do our children describe their experience? And thankfully, there was more than four or five words. But here's some of the responses that came out, are the most common responses. We're excited, happy, fine or okay, good, different or weird, anxious and boring. And, you know, I am certainly aware that some of what we would generally consider more positive emotions are clustered at the top. And what we might receive as more negative emotions clustered towards the bottom. But, you know, I, I really caution us to just see them as they are, as emotions, and knowing that this is how, this is how the kids are describing it, describing their experience right now. And then, the next piece was wanting to understand some of the coping strategies that our, that our kids are using. And some of this also came from our youth risk behavior surveys, where it really had struck me in our, in our most, in our last survey two years ago, where we had, where we had identified that twenty percent of our students had difficulties identifying a coping strategy that was effective for them to deal with anxious or depressed thoughts. And so, we wanted to survey in this, what are some of the coping strategies that our students are using? And try and get a little bit of understanding of how prevalent do, do parents? And then, for our older students, are they still identifying a, a lack of coping strategies, if you will? So, the coping strategies I put up here are the most, most prevalent. That came out, that came out of the survey. For our elementary population, it was play, whether it be outside or, or video games with a friend, deep breathing, reading, crying and yelling, using a stress ball, fidget or favorite toy, talking with a parent or family member, and then certainly some none, or I don't know. One of the things that I, I felt like had both a, both some positive news and some news for me to reflect on was a question around, do you feel like you're, like you have the mental health supports available for you in order to have a success, in order for your child to have a successful school year? And the answer, we had sixty-four percent of our parents respond yes. And only four percent responded no. And that, that I think is, is the positive of it. I, I think the question that I come to is, is the not sure population, where we have twenty-five percent of our parents unsure if they have the mental health supports available for a successful school year. So this is something that we are talking about with our counselors and will continue to be talking about as we connect with families about what supports are needed. And wondering if some of those support, some of those not sure's, are people really just not knowing what they don't know yet? And not knowing what the year would look like? So before I go on to secondary students, any questions I can take from the elementary population?
Can I ask just a clarifying question about that last data there, Mr. Levine?
Yeah.
The seven percent who aren't listed there just didn't respond?
I'm sorry?
Sixty-four percent plus four percent, twenty-five percent doesn't equal a hundred percent. Did the remaining percent not respond to this question at all?
No, so, I, I think the, where they don't add up is where we have some single respondents. that put, put on a single, a single answer around that fill in, in the other category. And so some of it is really going, going through those individual responses and understanding what, what the parent's response was in that.
Okay, so about seven percent, about seven percent on that question, for example, put other.
Correct.
Okay, I didn't realize there was another on that one. Okay, perfect. Thank you. Ms. Marchand?
Jason, is it fair to say that with the, the question where parents don't really know how to answer, that it's going, it could change when we get to conferences? And when we, as parents, can lean on the experiences of our teachers to tell us that as they assess our kids, they're either doing this or that? And so it, it's really about going through the process of conferences and communication with teachers for us as parents to really know, are our kids doing well or aren't they? Are they struggling or are they succeeding? And so I wonder if that wouldn't change a little bit more after conferences?
Thank you, Zinaan. I would, I would agree with you on that. I, I think none of this was meant to be a one-time, a one-time thing. And the point of sort of progressive data is really being able to reflect, okay, when we, when we get into, deep into quarter two, what does that change, what does that change look like from our quarter one data? And how do we respond differently than how we might have with just the first set of data?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bollinger?
Thank you. I had two questions. And I guess one was, Mr. Levine, do you know how the splits up between hybrid and remote responses?
As you asked in your, in your email, Ms. Bollinger, no, I, I did not run the data specific to separating out hybrid students from remote, remote students. I will say, in, in reflecting on that question, and I certainly will go in and, and pull out that data, I think you'll, you'll see that it'll be far more difficult, I think, to do that for our secondary students. And the reason being, the number of responses, I'm just gonna jump down here real quick. Number of responses for our full remote population was only sixteen for our secondary students in comparison to much higher responses from our AA, DB and four-day cohort. In, in looking at our elementary population, there was a higher response rate. Still not at the level that the AA and DB cohorts are. But I do feel like there, I could get some data from them.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other question, which I think you might have alluded to, this is just for quarter one, so you'll be running the, the survey on a quarterly basis? And I guess when is quarter two?
So this one, this one was quarter one. We have, have not set a specific timeline of quarter one, quarter two, quarter three, quarter four. We wanted to be able to pull in the data, reflect on it, and then make a mindful decision about our next, our next offering of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me just ask a clarification to, on the, Jason, on your response rate for elementary students, full remote, although that number is lower than your hybrid cohorts, it, it feels like as a, as a percentage basis, that's still pretty robust. Is that, and that, might that even be a higher percentage response rate than you got for the AA, BB cohorts? In other words, we, the smallest group of students are the ones who are fully remote. So I would expect to see a lower number. But as I compare fifty-one to one thirty-five and one twenty-six, that, that, that might, I mean, I have to just see what the numbers are. But I, I think you got basically a very solid response rate across all three. The chair is nodding like he understands what I'm saying. I hope you do. Does that make sense?
I didn't hear all, all of your comments, Chris, but I, I do think that the response rate for, for the elementary group is pretty representative of all the different buildings and all the different cohorts. I, I just don't feel that I have that same, same data for remote students in the secondary group.
Chris, at elementary, saying that it's the, it's robust considering the percentage of kids enrolled in remote is similar to the percentage of kids enrolled in the hybrid, in the elementary.
Thank you. Yes, I would, I would agree with that.
Thank you.
Chris, did you have another question? Because I had a couple of clarifications.
Ms. Bergstrom, I'm good.
Okay, thanks. Jason, Mr. Levine, could you scroll to where it said, is your student involved with a counselor? And I think the answer was like ten percent. Yes, right there, connection to a counselor. When this question was asked, did this refer to the social emotional coaches as well? And do you think parents are aware of the social and emotional support that kids are getting from social emotional counselors? Or do you think they view this as sort of a one-on-one or more of an IEP counseling session?
No, I'm pretty confident that the parents did count in the SCL coaches in this because a number of them specifically named, named them and talked about them in, in some of their comments.
Do you think that there's widespread, do you think this though could indicate, being that it's so low and we know what contact our SCL coaches are having with our students in school, do you think that this could indicate a level of awareness of what the social emotional counselors are doing in buildings? And that we need to have more of that perhaps?
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think, you know, when, when I think of connection to a counselor, I think parents may often see that as, as a one-on-one experience, like, like you mentioned, Michelle. But I do think that the, the experience that the SCL coaches have had in both classrooms and running groups has certainly had a large impact on our, on our students' need for further mental health services. And I think one of the things that we have been very progressive about is, is looking at this role as a preventative model, rather than looking at it as individual one-to-one services across the board. And so that the opportunity to continue to increase those prevention services, I think do have an impact on our students' need for further mental health services.
Great. And, oh, I totally lost my train of thought. But thank you. You can go on.
Thank you, Ms. Bergstrom. Additional questions, additional questions or comments? No, I think you can move on.
Okay. So our responses from our students were, was much higher. And we had eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-three responses for, in grade six through twelve. And here's sort of the layout of grade by grade. You'll see that overall, it's pretty even in the grade by grade responses. Obviously, some dips and some, some rises in others. But generally, we have some pretty solid responses throughout the grades. I will add, Mr. Mahoney responded that this was probably one of the best respondents, respondents gotten from a survey that he's seen in quite some time. Breaking, breaking those numbers down by cohorts, this is what our numbers look like, seven ninety-eight to eight oh six in cohort AA and DB, two hundred and seventy-three for the four-day week students, and sixteen for full remote students. Then connection to a, connection to a counselor, you, our, our numbers had thirty-seven-point-nine percent identify yes, that they had a connection to a counselor, and fifty-five-point-eight percent saying no. One of the trends I saw with this, as, as I looked at and I included it below it, is that you'll see that the numbers are stronger as the student moves on to the high school on their association with the counselor. I attribute some of this to the fact that the, that at the secondary level, all of the students are paired with their guidance counselor right from the start to begin the college and, and career readiness part of their, of their high school experience. But also they're there for a mental health support. And so I did, did see the numbers quite higher at, at the high school level of being able to identify a counselor. As well, I would add into, add into that, that at the high school, we also have our, our excel-in-transition programs, as well as our LLC four, where our students certainly identified their counselors in those programs.
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Jason, does it, given how robust the counseling department is, guidance department, I should, I mean, counselor means, and we've already talked about this, counselor means different things to different students and parents, right? We have counselors of different stripes. But when we call it as generically as we do in the survey, a counselor, does it surprise you that not even thirty percent of the respondents from cohort AA all the way across to full remote? I mean, five forty-eight's not even thirty percent who are identifying a counselor. Would you have expected, and, and I'm looking at the no rate, fifty-five-point-eight, would you have expected that rate, although that could be some McCall kids? So I guess I go back to the high school five forty-eight number. Does that number strike you as low?
I, I would say, Chris, in, in optimal worlds, I would love every student to be able to identify who, who their counselor, or, or I would add to that, a trusted adult is. That being said, I recognize that this also included students that just came in to the school, ninth graders that just entered the high school and may still be just getting to know their counselors, as well as sixth graders just entering McCall and just getting to know their counselors. But do I wish it was higher? Yes, absolutely I do. And that will certainly be a part of some of our work moving forward.
That would be just an interesting one to watch when there's another survey. I would hope we'd see some sharp uptick in that number. Thank you.
So as, as I continue on about the amount of stress people are experiencing with the transition to the new school year, the numbers were still very positive in, in my eyes in terms of the response, responses from the students, in terms of the amount of stress they're feeling. But the trend that I think is most obvious in this is that as the student is advancing later on in the, in the grades, the, the average of the responses is hi, is higher than the, than the lower grades. I attribute some of that to normal stress with transitioning, beginning the transition out of high school. But I also include in that some of the, some of the questions around that some families, some students are coming to the point where they're looking at college and career readiness and, and just the, the new school year and all the traditional things that students do at a, in the, in those later grades, like pons, et cetera, graduations, that they're approaching it with some question of whether or not it's gonna happen, how it's gonna happen, and all those things, as we know, add stress to our students' experience. So then I wanted to go on, we continued to look at the words that our students use to describe their experience. And at, at the high school, stressful and stressed was certainly the most, the most indicated response. In addition, there was happy, good, the fine, okay, all right, overwhelming, different and excited. Then those words were sort of in a, just a different order almost at the, at the middle school level, with happy, good, different or weird, excited, fine or okay, stressed and stressful had a, was down to seven percent as opposed to fourteen percent, and hard or difficult at four percent.
Ask a question?
Yeah, Mr. Nickson.
So, Jason, I, looking at the McCall, the McCall response, I naturally attribute hard and difficult to what I think of as like academic load, curriculum, executive function, keeping up with the work. And then I look at the high school and I don't see that exactly, but I see overwhelming. But overwhelming, to me, could be a broader category that includes all sorts, all sorts of social emotional interactions. Do you, do you read it, do you, do you feel like those two are sort of similar? Or do you read it the same way I do? Did you see any indicators, how to say this? Do, do you feel that the hard and difficult response at McCall is sort of an indication of, let's say, academic load or expectations? And is there any corollary in the high school responses on academics?
So, Chris, you know, honestly, some of that, some of that really comes down to guessing. In, in that, I do think that naturally, as students advance from the elementary grades to the secondary grades, sort of as you were hitting on, that the raise in academic pressure and the academic experience is very different than, than the elementary, elementary grades. And so possibly, yes. I, you know, come back to the fact that the students were filling out a survey that was clearly a mental health-focused survey. And so I don't want to discount the possibility that really some of what those McCall students may be talking about really come back to the overwhelming nature, like you're saying, at, at the high school, and just a different way of describing it, but not necessarily a reflection of the academic experience.
Thank you.
Mr. Levine, if I could just ask you, were they, students limited to one word? Or is this, could somebody could be stressed and happy and different?
Yes, you are right. We, for this, for this particular survey, we asked them to identify one word.
Okay.
That, that most reflects that their experience on that. Again, we, we were looking here really at the emotional vocabulary, not just the, not just, what's the word I'm trying to say?
Not just their state, but also their ability to use the words to describe their state?
Yes, 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 yes. Their, their ability to describe what they're, what they're feeling and put their finger on what they're, what they're feeling.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, was that just a, so were they given a list of options to select from? Or this, this was a pure open response?
Pure open response.
Got it. Thank you.
And then so, as I said, in the elementary group, we also wanted to look at the coping, the coping strategies of our students. And, you know, the coping strategies are, are not unlike what you would expect for a middle and high school student. Listening to music, deep breathing, sleep, the nothing or I don't know, take a break and talking with my friends was the coping strategies of the high school that were most prevalent. And they really seem to be just in a little bit of a different order at the, at McCall, with reading was one that came up more and playing video games. I, I was very happy to see that in both schools and the elementary. I, I was very happy to see that in both schools and the elementary, that deep breathing and breathing exercises were among the highest rated coping strategies because I do think that that offers a place for, for many teachers and counselors to help engage, engage our students very naturally with coping strategies. But it was now lost on me that we still do have many students at, at all levels that are not able to identify coping strategy that they use to deal with these tough, tough emotions. And then a question about, do you feel like you have the mental health supports available to you in order to have a successful school year? Again, the, the numbers here, the numbers here reflect pretty similarly to the, the elementary numbers and that there is a large population that says yes, a small population that says no, and then a moderate population that says that they're not sure. And so again, that not sure population is, is one that our counselors will be working to, to really get an understanding of. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Are there questions or comments from the committee about the second half of the presentation or anything from the entire presentation? Thank you very much, by the way. I would, I should have thanked you before I asked for questions. I appreciate how much time it took to, to compile all this information. Questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
So Jason, I'm curious, have you yet been shared this with the wider district staff, these results? And if so, what sort of reaction did you get? Were there some surprises? Is this seen as helpful? Are there some next steps that, that come out of these survey results with this group? Just share with us how you're, what are you doing with this internally now that you have it?
Thank you, Chris. So, so I did share the data with the, with the counselors at each, at each of the levels. And then our, our next step is, is really talking about what are the trends that we pull out of each building and also what are we doing as a, as a group, both district-wide and then in, in individual buildings? And I think that's some of what we're still planning in our, in our department meetings and our collaboration time. But I, I think, I think it is very clear that our work with understanding our families that don't, aren't sure if they have the resources that they need are certainly a priority to understand. The families that are, that don't feel like they have the, the resources that they need, that we want to make sure that we have an understanding of what those, what those resources that they need are and how we can be of assistance to them. And, and I, and I continue to go back to the coping strategies piece. I think that is one place that we have a, a real concrete place to be able to help our students and families, understanding how they handle stress during difficult times.
Thank you, Mr. Levine.
Thank you.
Ms. Marshant?
Thank you so much, Jason, for your leadership on this. It's, it's nice to see it all come together at the same time that you're part of a district team that's trying to run the district. So I really appreciate this effort. Is it fair to be cautious or, I shouldn't say cautious, is it fair to be optimistic about the state of our students in this pandemic, that they are in fact adapting, that they are in fact resilient, and that they're being creative and all of these positive things that we want to build on? And that actually there is a silver lining to this pandemic in that we are able to see in real time our children achieving some of those skills that, that the working corporate world is looking for in the future generations, people who are, who have good teamwork skills, who are adaptable and all of that. Is it fair to be optimistic about these results in that light?
I think, I absolutely think so. I, I was very, I, I was very optimistic when I saw the numbers related to stress that people are reporting and, and also the, the numbers of students that have a counselor connection. Yes, I know we have work to do in, in both of those, both of those areas, but I also, I also know that you've got to start somewhere and no matter what, our, our data is only a jumping off point from where, where we last were. And so I, I absolutely see this as, as, as positive data, but all, but with that comes that there's still work to be done. And that's one of the reasons I'm here.
Right. To follow up with that, it seems to me that, that the segment of the community that really needs support is the parents. They are overwhelmed, overworked, there's not enough time in the day, there aren't enough resources to provide for everything they wish for. So I personally would call on our community organizations to find ways to work with the town manager and others in the community, the local hospital, or whatever it is that these families are needing that are outside the scope of the public school system. So I really hope that we can turn to and lean on some of the mental health supports that, that people have brought into the community and much more. And I, I really hope that the community, the town makes that investment in our families because it will eventually trickle down to our students, yet it's definitely something that's outside the scope of what we as a public school district can do.
Thank, thank you for saying that, Zena. And I will add that I do find Winchester to be very fortunate in the amount of mental health resources that we have available to our students and families in, in the community. I think the, our recent bringing on of the interface program allows, allows families to have access to a mental health provider without dealing with the red tape that often comes along with looking for a mental health provider, as well as a very responsive program in, in Advocates Inc. for families dealing with emergency psychiatric difficulties.
Oh, that's great. Great. Thank you, Jason.
Additional questions? Ms. Bergstrom?
Hi, thank you. I, I did want to follow up on my comment from before, Mr. Levine, and I wanted to thank you because I see these as baseline surveys. This isn't necessarily a kind of task that we have undertaken outside of the youth risk behavior surveys in the past. So I appreciate you doing these as we're coming into the fall and early on in our back to school so that we are able to track changes and see how students are doing. And actually, we are tracking parents because we actually asked elementary parents, not elementary kids. So it's the parents' perceptions of how their kids are doing. So I'll be curious to see how that changes over time. So I appreciate you investing the time and doing this now. I guess I'm curious about the secondary data as well because to Ms. Marshant's point, it does seem like there are a significant number of kids who are doing well, but they also have a significant amount of access to counseling services. So the one piece of data that I didn't see in this that I'm curious about is, do you know how much our students' visits to counselors have increased since the beginning of the school year? Are our students doing so well because of that investment you talk about Winchester is making both in personal counseling and in school counseling? Are we seeing more, more students need to make visits to the counseling office, to individual counselors at the high school?
So that's a pretty broad question, Michelle. I, I do want to add and thank you for your comments on, on this survey being a baseline. I do believe in really all of these surveys providing a new baseline for, for you every time you do it. And it's about identifying where to continue your work in, in these areas. So, so I don't ever see it as a, is this a survey to tell us that we're done with something? It's where do we keep going with it? As far as, I don't have a good reflection on how much of an increase our counselors have seen. I know that our counselors have been seeing many students on a, on a daily basis, both, both at, at all three levels. And I wouldn't, I would not say that that's, that it's all specific to our transition back. Some of them are students that are struggling with issues that they would have struggled with had we not been in the midst of a pandemic or, or along those lines. But, but yes, we certainly have seen students that, that they're struggling, they're struggling with the coming back and integrating into a new experience. I would add though, that I think that overall our numbers are fairly, fairly low on that in terms of students that are coming because that, because they're directly struggling with it, more about how to organize themselves around the, the new, the new learning model.
And do we, do we still have enough counseling staff to be able to manage that, that change and that increase so that we continue to see these good trends among students? Because we know when students aren't mentally ready to learn, they're not going to learn academically. So as a school committee member, I'm interested in the investments we've made in counseling in the past and to know whether in the, in this environment, if we still have the adequate staffing we need in those areas.
I think that's, that's a tough question. I, I think one of the things that we have really done over, over my time here and certainly was sort of prior to, to me, is really focusing on that preventative work so that we're able to be more effective in our post-vention work. But I would say that the, we will always continue to need more mental health supports because I think our supports, our, the needs of our students and families continue to get more complex. But that being said, it's not necessarily just in one-to-one interactions with students. It's also having counselors that can run groups, can run, can run lessons with a full classroom and, and things like that that can have the more of an impact than just the, the one-to-one cases. And those one-to-one cases are also important. But I feel like when you're able to focus on the more prevention work, your post-vention work is more targeted.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bolognese?
I was just wondering, was there any demographic information on the survey?
Uh, no, there was not.
Just internal, yeah, okay.
Is there, is there something in particular you're looking for, Karen?
I was just wondering if, if there was any demographic information so that you could see if there were any differences among different ethnicities within town, in our schools?
I, I had not included that in the initial report. I think one of the things that is certainly a balancing piece when you're trying to put together these surveys, especially ones that students are going to respond to, is you want to make it as concise as possible, but be able to get, get the information that you're looking for in it because as, the more you, the more lengthy you make it, I, I find student, you'll find less students respond to it.
I guess I'm just thinking about on the youth risk behavior survey or maybe on like the climates, climate survey in the middle school or the, yeah, there was usually like one question just around what's your background?
You're right. And I will, I will add to that, that this, that 2021 is also a youth risk behavior survey year again, so we will have that opportunity to get that data again in this spring.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you very much. I just have two, a quick comment that I would echo what Ms. Bolognese said earlier regarding the difference between hybrid and remote. I know I had also emailed you about this. Where you have the data, I'd be curious to see if you broke out, for instance, at the elementary level, if we saw the same trends as far as how much stress there is, excuse me, at hybrid and remote? Because then you could know where you could focus your efforts if there was a significant difference in one place or the other, and maybe there is no difference.
Sure, I will get that data for you.
Second comment I would make is since this is sort of a baseline, the, the statement's not sure as far as do you feel like you have the mental health supports available? I, I sense that you were, you found that a point of concern. I find that a point of honesty. In this year, I'm not sure how, being sure of almost anything is really hard to say. So actually, I'd be much more concerned in a way if it was 95% said yes and 5% said no, because I'd say to myself, how can 95% of people know that they have the mental health supports available for a year of unknowns? So I think that the honesty there, that, I mean, most of us don't have any idea what we're going to be doing next week at this point or how sure we are. So I, I think that that leads, lends credence to that the rest of the data is valuable. So I don't see it as a point of concern myself. I see it as something to follow, but certainly, you know, again, honesty in the year of 2020 where, you know, we could have hailstorm tonight, you know, who knows?
Sure, I, I appreciate that, Brian, and I agree with you. The only thing I, I would add though, is that this gives our, this gives a place for our counselors to dig deeper with their students in understanding what, what was the not sure from? Is it in fact that you don't know because you don't know what's coming tomorrow? And if that's in fact the case, that is a far different response than a, than a student who's identifying I'm not sure because I don't feel like I have anything in place, but I don't know that I need anything.
That's a good point. Well, thank you very much. We took a lot of your time and I appreciate it. And it sounds like something that we will hear more in the coming months, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we would, I propose we move on to the next agenda item, which is fiscal year 22 budget development process and timeline. Obviously, this year is different in many ways from other years, but we still have to develop fiscal year 22 budget. And Dr. Evans, you've provided us the timeline, we all have it in our packet, and if you wanted to kick it over to you, I'd be happy to do so.
Sure. Ellen and I can speak to this. This is very similar to the previous budget development calendars that we have developed despite a lot of uncertainties, both on the expense side and the revenue side, we still have to come up with an FYI 22 budget. The good news is because of the override, we have some things in the pipeline that for multi-year additions, as we're building up to improve program, we'll include those. We'll include some of the enrollment-related positions I spoke about at a previous meeting that are driven by, I think, what would be a strong bounce back from students who are currently not in district programs. And we'll take a look at keeping expenses relatively level from the shares numbers, given, again, uncertainty about state-level budgets, which have really put a, put a damper on our ability to plan because of the loading super budget process this year. because of the municipal budget process this year. If that continues to be the case next year, it's going to be very helpful for town meeting to make good recommendations for FY '22 budget. So Ellen and I will be happy to take questions or suggestions. This is only a draft calendar. I think the most important thing is it will culminate in late January on a state may vote. But that vote is not a binding vote in terms of where we will stand by town meeting. It's our preliminary vote to submit to the town manager so that she can look at resources on the town side and anticipated revenue and look at our ability to fund this proposed budget. It should, we also have, we're in a year where we know what our contract cost will be relative to joint bargaining. So that's fairly straightforward to put in the budget. And what we don't know is whether we'll still be in a pandemic educational experience next fall and what impact that might have. I'm planning for a normal educational experience at this point. And if there's anything else I should have mentioned before you give us feedback on any of these data process? Ellen, is there anything you'd like to add that I didn't mention or I shouldn't? No, you covered it all.
Thank you, Dr. Evans, Ms. Widmore. I would ask the committee if there are any questions or comments on the timeline as presented in our packet. Mr. Nixon?
So just a thought, sorry, I had to step out, took a call related to Lynch and the MSBA. So that was good information to get. So, yeah, I just, I have a general thought, which is, you know, we, we, there are certain milestones in the calendar that we try to adhere to every year. And that includes we vote a budget by the end of January, and the town manager has a budget out by mid-February. And that's all geared towards being prepared for town meeting in the spring. Just a couple of high-level thoughts. I, I have no expectation there will be any additional federal stimulus package until there is an inauguration. But there's certainly a lot of interest in and call for a stimulus that would support state and local governments. And should that happen, that would be very consequential for us because while, you know, we develop a budget that's for the schools, ours is the biggest share of the total municipal budget. And other areas of municipal finance are under pressure. And as we remember from our recent town meeting, we had some supplemental funding. All the cleaning that's happening in our schools is not really coming out of the school budget. That's a DPW budget, but it's certainly for the direct benefit of our students and staff. And so I wanted to sort of throw out there as a question, if it was any, any regular year, I say that with air quotes, we, I would presume our goal would be to be voting a budget at the end of January and to give that to Ms. Wong, so she's got a couple of weeks to put her budget together. I wonder if, and I apologize if somebody's already asked this question of Dr. Evans, have you had conversations with the town manager about kind of an end game on schedule and being prepared for a spring town meeting? Understanding that we postponed the last spring town meeting, given some of the changes that could be coming, whether it has to do with vaccine and the change in operations and whether we continue to be doing deep cleaning, which is very expensive, or we back off of that? Whether there is some stimulus and additional support to the town coffers? A lot of that, we're not going to know by the end of January. Is, is it worthwhile to have a conversation with the town manager about her sentiment towards scheduling a spring town meeting? And is it, is it worthwhile for us to consider kind of taking the usual budget development timeline and just pushing everything out some amount? I don't know what that is. I don't know if that's two, three, or four weeks. The benefit would be we would have a clearer understanding of what we're doing in our town and in our district and what the costs are, as well as any supplemental funds that we may be receiving. So that, it's a long way of just saying, is this a year where we, does it make sense to have an early and focused conversation with management, Dr. Evans, about maybe making some adjustments for all those reasons?
So I have not discussed a potential change to the town meeting timeline. We have had numerous discussions, and Ellen has had lots of discussions with DPW, had discussions with Public Health around additional costs associated with COVID-19.